We ready? Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order and roll call. All commissioners are present. So we will begin. First of all, I want to start by saying thank you for selecting me as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Your confidence in me is greatly appreciated. It's my goal to serve with integrity, objectivity, passion, intelligence, and courage to preserve and safeguard the small-town charm and the beauty of the majestic Chesapeake Bay. I just want to quote Margaret Mead, her comments on service. And I just want to put this out, just to think about, that never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. The Planning and Zoning Commission would like to take this time to thank Chris Jubiak, AICP, which is the American Institute of Certified Planners, for his role here as our Planning and Zoning Administrator, as well as to congratulate him on his new role as Director of Planning for the City of Annapolis. Chris has served as the Town's Planning and Zoning Administrator since 2012. However, his work with the town began nearly a decade before that. In 2002, his firm, Jubiak and Associates, Inc., prepared the town's comprehensive plan, a plan for the year 2020, which was selected by the Maryland Chapter of the American Planning Association for the Outstanding Plan in Maryland Award for the 2002-2003 year. This award would not have been possible without Chris's guidance and direction. He's also played a key role in the town's successful award of funding to complete the Chesapeake Bay, Chesapeake Beach Railway Trail. And his guidance to the Planning and Zoning Commission is based on over 30 years of planning experience. This experience has been vital to the town addressing the density of development, the protection of natural areas, and promoting coastal resiliency through his work, most recently on the adopted 2040 Comprehensive and Coastal Resiliency Plans. Chris has offered his guidance, experience, and education to the commission, which, without it, our recommendations would be less grounded, less sound technically, and without his expert knowledge. We will miss Chris's insight, his sound judgment, particularly his calm demeanor, and at times, despite our heated discussion and debate. To our friend, our colleague, and our outstanding Planning and Zoning Administrator, we say congratulations to you, Chris. We wish you the best of luck as Director, and you will always have a home here in Chesapeake Beach.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairwoman Barold, I really appreciate that. It's a very kind message, and a lot of it's not deserved, but it really reflects a lot of time spent with you and the Planning Commission members and with the town leaders and residents, and that's what I've really cherished. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we look for the approval of the July 26, 2023 Planning Commission Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. And now I'd like, at this time, to introduce and welcome our newest Commissioner, Rachel Larson Weaver. I just want to say that, Rachel, we are very happy to have you as a new member and very excited about your interest. Just to say briefly that Rachel is an artist, she's an educator and a small-business owner. She's a local, she grew up in Chesapeake Beach, her family moved here over 70 years ago, probably my age. Rachel is also the mother of five, and she's joyfully married to Tom. I took license with that, so.
Yeah, he's pretty good.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
And my last comment would be, just to acknowledge that Commissioner Brown was reappointed last week by the Town Council to serve as a Commissioner until 2028, and Larry was originally appointed in 2018. So, congratulations, Commissioner Brown. On that note, let us, do we have approval of the minutes of the July 5, 2023 Planning Commission meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? That is approved. And now?
I think it's worth noting that this is the first time in my memory when we've had seven commissioners, a full commission, on here on the dais, so.
Nice, very good. Well, we'll have to thank Mayor Pat for making us have a full complement, so, very, very exciting. And now, we will, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none. I didn't, there's no call-ins, is that correct, Sharon?
No.
Okay. And we will move forward with item, Agenda Item Number Six, Old Business, which we will begin with the Critical Area Regulations.
Chair Barold, you all should have received a public comment from Wes Donovan.
Oh, via email?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that. Now, do I read this letter, or is it just submitted via the document? Is it just submitted? Or is it read?
You don't have to read it.
It is, it is addressed, it is addressed to the mayor and the Town Council.
Yeah, they, they received it, and he asked if I would pass it on to the commission.
Okay. So, I guess we will just.
Record the heat.
Duly note that and record it. Thank you, Sharon. So, at this juncture now, can we move to, on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the Critical Area Regulations?
Okay.
Okay. Well, I aimed to have this document entirely finished, but I failed in that, but I'm close. And what I did was incorporate all the changes that you made previous meetings into this draft, and then continued on through the buffer management area, the grandfathering, the growth allocation section, and the variance section, and in places made some other changes to the model ordinance. Those changes are not really substantive or major, but I thought they were just general improvements. You have this version, you see the yellow is text that I would suggest removing, or that you already removed, and the red is text that would be added. Then I highlighted an inordinate number of references to COMAR, and Commissioner Brown brought this up at the last meeting, and I haven't gone through all these references. And I, it was daunting to go through each of those and figure out a way to respond to what I'm seeing there, and candidly, I don't have that done yet, but I think it's worthwhile. In some cases, I think it's fine just to remove the reference altogether because it's not required. In other cases, it would be helpful to the average citizen to see what the standard is in state law. So, what I'm suggesting is that when you get this in final form, and I would have it for you, and before I leave, so you'll have it in August, so you, at your September meeting, you'll have this, you'll have refer, you'll have the, my approach to how these COMAR references could be addressed for your review. I highlighted many of them, there's some I actually didn't highlight at all. I'm not quite sure why I did that, as some I thought it's fine to leave a reference like that because it's so arcane, and to develop what the state wants us to do, it would require a lot of technical language being incorporated in this local law, and I thought, why not just leave it alone? But, in any case, I wanted to draw your attention to that. That's why those references in green are scattered throughout the document. Commissioner Brown, do you have any particular thoughts on this topic?
Yeah, I went through, and there's got to be 30 or 40 different places. Like Chris said, some of them are in green, but the majority are not. It seems to me that when we include a reference like that, some of them are pretty benign. You can almost line it out, and it doesn't change the wording or the meaning, but we're, we're, when the state changes its code, then it's changing our code, and I'm not sure we necessarily want that. And if, and I would think, as a bare minimum, the ones that we leave in our code, we should at least go through and read those and make sure that we don't have any issues with, with including it. Some of, I ran off two of them for the last meeting, and they're like two or three pages long, so there's a lot of material that that just incorporates by reference. And just, my main concern, I guess, is if you look at the Planning and Zoning Commission Code in Chesapeake Beach, it references a law that's no longer applicable, a state law, says in accordance with this, da-da-da, and that's been gone for 20 years because the state renumbered everything. So, it potentially adds confusion, potentially leaves the, incorporates things that we don't need or want, so I would like to see as many, not all, there's one or two I noticed in there that I thought were useful, but I think we should, we need to look at that closely.
Should we, at this point, just go by commissioners and have them comment?
Sure.
Sharon, is there an extra copy of, I don't have the.
Can I take yours? Oh, no. I didn't take hers.
I do have enough.
Use my computer.
You can just look at the first page, and you've got COMAR reference there.
Commissioner Hahn?
No comment at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Weaver?
No comment at this time.
I think I'm next. COMAR, you know, it's interesting because it's, it's critical that we understand the COMAR, and, you know, when I was going through all of these pages again, I was doing exactly what Commissioner Brown was referring to in referencing the COMAR, and it does get a little more complicated when we do that. So, when you, so you're going to, so let me get this again straight. You're going to go ahead and highlight all the areas that have the regulations, the state regulations that, that, that these ordinances are derived from? I'm trying to figure out what it is you're trying to do, you're going to do again here, Chris.
Well, I myself wanted to go through every reference.
Uh-huh.
To make sure it's, to make a judgment call about whether we should include the text in state law, or just simply include the COMAR reference, or to eliminate the reference altogether, or just let it go. But, when I was hearing Larry, I was thinking to myself, maybe I, what we ought to do is just print out every reference and bring it to your attention, so that you have it and you can make your own judgment about it. At least you'll have it to evaluate whether you think what I did was reasonable in terms of developing the point, or just. It'll just be another stack of regulations that you'd have to read if you wanted to, but we can do that.
So, okay, let me just clarify all this, because I got confused then. So, not every section is based on a regulation from the state.
Well, yeah, that's true. It's fundamentally true.
But some are, and those are the ones we cannot change. I'm trying to figure out which ones we can amend, or modify, or change, but the ones from the state, obviously, we're not going to change much of, right?
For instance, where it says a, an oyster harvest area as defined in COMAR.
Yeah. Where, where are you?
No, that is a standard of state law. You can't disturb an oyster.
You can't, yeah, so that is something we're not.
And it doesn't matter how the state defines it, or where it defines it, it can't be.
Right.
So, maybe we leave that reference in, and in the very narrow, unique situation where that might ever come up with somebody, they're going to have to do that research themselves. But there may, there are other examples where, and I can't recall right now, I should have been prepared on this point alone, that I thought, oh, that makes sense, those criteria are relevant to put right in the code. It, the code reads, our code reads better if it has the same standards as a state code. And so I did that, just that, and when we get through this, I think I'll find the place that I'm referring to.
When I went through to try and figure out if there were things that I thought we could modify.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure that it wasn't based on some COMAR, you know, some regulation from the state that's already been established. Is that not what I should have been doing?
The bulk of this model ordinance is based on state law or state regulation.
There's some things that you can.
There are some things that you can do differently, but it all has to be approved by the Critical Area Commission. So, for instance, we talked about making the buffer 200 feet high rather than 100 feet. 100 feet is a state regulation. I talked to the Critical Area Staff, they said, no one's ever asked about that before, but we'd have to approve it, and when you get your work done, send it to us as a complete package, we'll review it in the context of the entire, or your draft ordinance.
Well, then.
So it's conceivable that the commission, when it meets, the full body of the commission, the mayor is actually a member of that Critical Area Commission, like many mayors in state are, they will make a judgment about whether that increase is consistent with the state regulatory framework or not, and they'll either say yes or no.
So, even though it doesn't say that it's based on, you know, COMAR 26.17.02, whatever, if it doesn't have that reference in there, then it's something that we could possibly modify, correct? Is that what I'm?
Yes, and there are some footnotes throughout this that.
Yes.
Or in the model ordinance, and it says something like, "A local jurisdiction may consider adopting their own standards."
Right, I've seen it, right.
And a lot of that is related to procedure, like, is it the Board of Appeals that makes the decision, or the zoning administrator?
Okay.
But there are some substantive issues, like the MBA, how you deal with MBA. I don't know if it's a matter of law or just practice, but it's customary that towns modify that a little bit, and Chesapeake Beach did, as we've talked about before. So there's something that the state gives the towns the ability to modify and customize.
Okay, so, tonight, I assume we are going to review what you've done, as far as, you know, the yellowing and the, you know, just deleting whatever, and then we're going to maybe add, or, you know, make some changes ourselves. If we bring it back in September, that, that means then that we will not complete this until October. Is that what we're, is that our timeframe now? You will not be able to complete this with us.
Right, I won't be here to.
No, so, so what you're saying is giving us the COMAR regulator, the regulations in September, I would hope that we would have finished this by then, right? I mean, will that be too late to give us all those, the regulations at that point?
No, I'll, I'll send them to you in August, so that you can have them with you.
Okay.
Review them, but perhaps you'll be ready in your September meeting to, to approve it.
Okay.
And remember, your approval is important, it's, it's a recommendation, and once you do that, it goes both to the mayor and council and to the Critical Area Commission. You'll actually sit with the Critical Area Commission first before the mayor and council take it up. And, and if they have any substantive changes that rock what you're doing, they're going to probably, as a matter of courtesy, send it back to the Planning Commission, say, would you consider making the following changes? Or, or you changed something that state law prohibits you to change? But I don't think you are. So far, you haven't changed anything that state law prevents.
It's the courtesy one I've got tonight.
But you might, I mean.
Um, you're here to the, through the, till September 1, is that correct?
August 31st.
Okay, so it's feasible if, if.
Exactly.
Is there, is there a time on August 31, close to business? If, if the commission decided to have an August meeting, would that be possible? If we got, we had this document and review it, then you, we would actually have the possibility of maybe approving it for your departure if we met in August, if the, if the commission was willing?
Conceivable, I bet. Last, August Planning Commission meeting, which is the 26th or something of August. Sure.
So, that's certainly an option for us, rather than pushing on to October. So, that was actually one of my thoughts that I was going to present at the end of the meeting, but certainly, to my mind, to have your, you know, the consistency of you and your involvement, so that we could actually approve this, you know, while you're here, I think would be a great goal, especially, you know, rather than begin this with a, a new Planning and Zoning Administrator, so.
Chairwoman, I, I yield to Commissioner Redkey.
I have no comment at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Blackwelder?
So, a couple of comments on the, the COMAR references. I think they're useful, I think we should eliminate as few as possible. I know when I'm at work, going through a big document, and they reference the, the larger regulations, I find it helpful to know exactly which regulations I need to reference. So I am, I will not be for removing COMAR references. And I think, and it's not too much to expect of a professional engineer, somebody who wants to develop permanent structures in our critical area, to read the state regulations and to know what they're talking about, and to know what they're doing, I don't think it's a burden on anybody, and certainly shouldn't be a burden on us to reference the state regulations. So, that's my feeling on that. As far as meeting in August, that's, I think that's a great goal. In general, I just, since it's come up, I just want to just caution the commission of making decisions under a pressure cooker. We're going to pass regulations, and in this case, we are going to send them to the Town Council, who should review them and make sure that they implement their vision that they got elected to implement. But I, you know, I, I own my vote, everybody here owns their vote, and I don't think that we should cast our vote for approval of something until we are ready to cast it. And I would say that that would hold true for site plan review as well. And there's going to be, going forward, any number of people that want us to make hasty decisions, or uninformed decisions. It is not our job to make a decision, it's our job to make a good decision, and, and time is part of that decision, but it is not the only part of that decision. So, I'm, I'm happy to have that as a goal. I don't think it would be a horrible thing to have two perspectives of two planning professionals. I do appreciate Chris's patience in going through everything with us. He is, he shines at that, he's, he's, he's a good teacher. But, on the same token, these are the regulations that are going to be followed in our, in our most precious areas that are disappearing in town, and we need to make sure that they are doing what they are supposed to do.
My only comment, I, I am not suggesting in any fashion that anybody make a hasty, uninformed decision. We will have, it's July 25th or 26th, we will have a month to review this if we meet in August, and if, if we're at that point, and we can make a recommendation, then we will. And I'm not intimating that we, we make an unsound decision. I'm just saying, we also don't want to, you know, perseverate, we want to be effective, and, and that's in all matters, that, you know, there's only so much debate, review, debate that we can have without then becoming ineffective. So, I have no problem, you know, if we have one more month with Chris's oversight and, and guidance, excellent. If that doesn't occur, and we go, we then finish the document with a new Planning and Zoning Administrator, so be it, but that's my thoughts.
Madam Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Brown?
Just to comment on Commissioner Blackwelder's thoughts. If you listen to the Town Council meeting this, this month, half the commission, half the Town Council voted against the three ordinances that we proposed, and their concern was that they wanted to spend more time going through them. So I, I think it's important that we not push forward until we're ready to push it to the Town Council, and not, not be under any pressure to do these things.
Duly noted, Commissioner Brown. All right. So at this point, we, there's no further review, we will review the draft ordinance. And then, are we going to, I guess we should determine if we are going to meet next month. Does anybody have any opposition to meeting? I believe it's the.
I think it's the week after.
Oh, yeah, it would be, you're right. Commissioner Hahn, we would meet on August 23, Planning and Zoning Meeting.
I'm fine to meet if we have a document to review.
Okay.
I am as well.
You have to ask.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to go.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Yes?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, we have to ask.
Well, I understand that, that I had spoke with the, the Town Administrator, and shared that we had, we have some, you know, work that we would like to work with the Planning and Zoning Administrator before we left, and my, my thought was, in our conversation, I believe the Town Administrator was willing to, you know, we were supposed to recess, and I thought that we would have the resources to meet in August, but we, we will verify that, and if so, then we will meet, we'll have a Planning and Zoning Meeting. Chris, Mr. Jubiak, is that work for you?
Yes, I can.
And?
Although, you said all these nice things about me, I.
Now he's taking.
Should I take them back?
You might have to say them again, and that's, that's my vote.
More cake!
Yes, I, I can be here.
Okay. And then there's the August 31 meeting at 17:00 p.m. Just checking to see.
I think.
Okay. All right. So, now we are going on to, we're going to go back to the Critical Area Regulations and.
Okay.
Move forward with those? Okay?
You got it. Commissioner Weaver, just, let me give a quick overview. So the town has a zoning map, and it divides the town into various districts. And you can do certain things in some districts and not in others, like commercial zone allows commercial uses. A residential zone allows houses but not commercial uses. There's also a critical area zoning map. We don't call it a zoning map, but effectively it is. And, uh, all the land within 1,000 feet of a tidal marsh or the Chesapeake Bay is part of the critical area. It looks like you have a map there, that's good. So, um, all development activities within that area that's mapped in green, red, or yellow is subject to additional regulations designed to protect the environment, water quality and wildlife habitat. Okay, those are the two goals of the critical area zone. And this is a state law that all jurisdictions that have access to the water, the bay, have, um, have to implement. So the critical area law that we're looking at is given to us by the, the state of Maryland. And we're allowed to manipulate it somewhat in some small areas, but we also ultimately have to adopt it, and we have to administer it, and it's a mandate from the state, uh, who gives the town zoning authority. It says, while you're doing that, you're going to protect the, these sensitive areas along the bay. So happens a lot of the town is within the critical area because we're a waterfront community. So that's what this is. And these regulations are in the zoning ordinance now. And, um, they're, they're primarily concentrated in one chapter of the zoning ordinance. And, um, the end result of this activity would be to repeal what's in the current zoning ordinance and replace it with this. Okay? And, uh, so at the next meeting, we'll have a little chart or write-up or memo that says what's being repealed, you know, because it's a variety of sections throughout the current zoning ordinance. It's not just one chapter, it's one primary chapter, then there are a couple of other places where critical area language is embedded. All of it gets removed and replaced with something like this. We don't have to worry about all the cross-references and the details. The town attorney will handle that aspect of it. We just got to get the policy stuff right, which is, which is, you know, codified in this document. Uh, and that's a quick summary. Yeah, sure. So this is a model ordinance given to us by state, the state of Amer- the state of, the state of Maryland Critical Area Commission, and we've begun to customize it. We got through, I'd say, two-thirds of it already. And, um, maybe what I should just do, I don't know, whi- which, what's the pleasure of the commission? Should I review things that you've already decided to do, or should I just go right to the place where we kind of left off?
Um, my feeling is we should go from the place we left off, but...
So not go back through all these, like, first 15, 20 pages where, I, I think I follow the, the minutes faithfully. Uh, I, I will tell you, there's one, having said that, there's one area that I actually added because I thought it was a mission. So, if you look on page two, under responsibilities, this is part of the code that says, um...
Is that Roman numeral two, or?
Uh, oh no, it's page two, page two.
Okay.
Item C, responsibilities. I added a three. As provided elsewhere in this ordinance, in the review and approval of plans and applications, the local approving authority shall be either the zoning administrator, the planning commissioner, or board of zoning appeals, depending on the specific petition filed with the town. So I wanted to be clear what the approving authority is, because throughout this document, we refer to approving authority, but we never said who's, what it means. So it's the person or body that's making a decision. Okay? And, um... Yeah, so, for instance, if it's a small, uh, addition to a house within the critical area, the approving authority will be the zoning administrator. If it's a commercial development, or multifamily building, or townhouses, or marina, or any number of other projects, it's going to be the planning commission. If someone's seeking a variance to change how these documents are applied to their property, it's going to be the board of appeals. They have three different, three different actors in this document.
But that's not identi- I don't see that you, that's not reflected here in the, under responsibilities.
Well, that, that's, uh, number three just says, um, that when we say we're zoning administrator, it, it's depends, it's either one of those three bodies. And it is, and we, and this is part of a bigger ordinance. So when we talk about the ordinance, we're talking about the zoning book, the zoning ordinance. So where the zoning ordinance requires a, the planning commission to approve a site plan, you are the approving authority, if that site plan is in the critical area, right, or no matter where it is. If, if it's, if the applic- elsewhere in the zoning ordinance, in the zoning book, it says the zoning administrator should approve a category-two site plan, which is a single-family house, or an addition, or a deck, or a porch. And we do those all the time. I'm the approval, approving authority in, in administrating these zoning, or these, um, critical area lo- regulations for category-two site plans. So I didn't feel I needed to specify each. It just, I thought it was at least enough to say who the authorities are, and that they derive their power from the zoning ordinance generally. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. Um, I don't think I changed anything else.
Uh, Chris, Chris, on the first page, you have, uh, insert date. Don't, don't we know when the town adopted the first critical area, uh, program?
Yeah, I, um, so that insert date is, um, a holdover from the, the model ordinance. It's like them telling us. I just didn't have the actual date at the time. And I, I think it's December 1st, 1985, but I'm not quite sure about that, so I didn't want to put it in just yet. But I will have that answer. That shows that, that blank space needs to be filled in in about three or four different places in this code.
Same date.
Yeah, it would be the, that's right. There are places where, when we refer to date, we're referring to the adoption of this new code, but we'll get to that.
E, are we reversing procedures? Um, on page three?
Yeah.
So, is as specified in COMAR 27 dot 03 dot 01 dot 04, and then you're crossing out that the application, you completed with a project notification to the critical area. Are we skipping a step, or reversing a step, or what was the purpose of crossing out these two items?
Okay, just a moment here. Okay, um, so with respect to that point one there?
Page three. Chris, you're on the preliminary draft, page three, is that correct?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same.
In the same document, and the same document, same page, same batch.
We're good.
Commissioner Blackwelder? Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay. So, this refers to, um... There are a couple of things at work here. One is, I, I use the 2022 version, the model, okay? What you reviewed first in the beginning was the 2018 version, so there are some differences. So some of this changing things was, I, I think, I kind of liked the way they used the heading in the 2018 version. I thought it was better. So I might have, in this case, I used applications referred to the critical area commission, rather than notification of project approval. So I, that is, that's that. On number one there, I just don't... I didn't want to make it a requirement for the town to send, to notify the commission in a way that it wouldn't necessarily prefer to do. I'm all for notifying the commission because it's required to do, but I didn't want to make the commission's preference for how it gets notified part of your law, because it's so easy to mess up. And part of this code puts burdens on the town. And one thing I learned in municipal code writing is not to box your client in unnecessarily. So I don't want to write code that says, "You shall do this, you shall do that", when it's not required. This is just an approach to notification. So, um, uh, notica- should we have to be, I mean, the quite, the, the standard here is, uh, public notification, a project notification has to be hap- done on a form, downloaded from the commission's website. I don't, so I just don't think that is a standard that should show up in an, in an ordinance like this. The commission's website may not even be working, uh, in it 10 years from now. And this is the, more of a suggestion about how notifications should take place.
So how do we prevent a last-minute notification of the critical area? I mean, I want the critical area commission to have time to chime in on things if there are critical area concerns. Though skipping some of these steps, I think prevents that and perhaps makes certain things that, you know, no developer's going to worry about it. I don't think the people that are pressured by the developers are going to worry about these things. The, the critical area commission is one of our lines of defenses for critical area concerns. And if they're notified late, I, I think that that could be a problem.
There is another section of the, the, the code where it specifies when notification has to take place, and I didn't change that because it actually referred to a certain period of time, uh, and it was 10 days, and then for another one, for 30 days. I, I left that in place. And the reference to the COMAR 2703, what I did there was delete the code, the reference, and I added the four point, four points that are in COMAR, the four exceptions. So this was an example, to Larry's point, of where I thought it would be better to actually have the state code embedded into our code rather than simply a reference. So I removed the reference and listed the actual standards from the code.
Is there, is there further explanation i- in, in the removal of the, the COMAR citation? Is there further explanation other than those four, uh, items that somebody would want to see as the reference? So, you said you've removed the citation, you, as specified in COMAR 27.03, and then you instead itemize those four, um, the four following from that citation? Is what my question is, is there anything else in that citation, or was it only those four?
Oh, it's just those four.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just, it's a, it's meant to list exactly what's in COMAR.
Okay.
But, you know, by the same token, we could leave the reference to COMAR and, and the four standards. But I, I do think it's better to have the four entries here, so someone reading this knows what is exempt from notification, what's not. And the person that's going to be that, is going to, the person sitting in this chair is going to have to say, "Oh, okay, I don't have to send that to the critical area commission."
But I would like to leave number one, because that ensures that the project goes to the critical area commission before we waste our time on it.
Number one, in the list of four, number one?
No, no, no.
The thing you deleted.
Oh, you like to keep that.
Where it says, I would like to keep that, yes. It's, it's, I mean, it's a form. People have to fill out forms. When they do big things, it happens. I, I don't think it's a big burden.
Everybody else okay with that? Is, is it a matter of?
So I'll make that motion not to strike. Well, E, parentheses one.
Well, okay, make your, let, let Commissioner Blackwelder make her motion, and then we can discuss that.
You seconded it.
Did you second it, Jim?
Oh, yes.
All right, uh, vice chair, Green Gold?
Uh, I was just going to say that it's not written correctly. It says, "The Chesapeake Beach may not..." "The Chesapeake Beach may not process an application." So you'd have to say the town of Chesapeake Beach. You'd have to change the wording of that second sentence if you were going to keep it. I, I don't think... You know, I think, you know, what Chris is concerned, what I did like about your version, Chris, is that it seemed to simplify things a little bit. It was easier to read. And I, I think that one of the reasons why you deleted it was just to eliminate some of the extraneous material. Is that, is that why you deleted it in the first place? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with doing either way, but...
Yeah, I, I did, and...
I just thought I was, you know...
My, my main thing was to delete the first part of that. It says, "The applicant shall, application shall be accompanied by a completed project notification application form downloaded from the critical area, from the commission's website." It just, I just don't like that such direct, specific, didactic direction from a state agency to how a local agency, you, are going to do your business. The important thing is that a notification take place, so. But anyway, that's just my way of constructing these, these codes. But, and I, I doubt that's a requirement of state law. That's the critical area, writing its model ordinance, telling us, "We'd prefer that you do this approach", because it makes it easier on us.
So then, if you were going to keep it, could we add the town of Chesapeake Beach?
Oh yeah, absolutely. That is just a, a process of formatting.
You're going to change it, okay.
Changing their municipality to Chesapeake Beach. So what, what it would be is that, um, I think we would have E as the main title, and then E1 would be, "The town shall send copies", and, and each of the exceptions would be A, B, C, D. Then you would add a number two, and then you would, for number two, you would say, "The application should be accompanied by the project notification form." Then number three, what I'm doing is going back to the, the other model. Three would say, "The, the town may not process an application, et cetera." Then number four, "An application by Chesapeake Beaches in violation, these procedures shall be void." So, that's how I would suggest doing that.
Let's go, let's go around. Go ahead.
Well, I have, is this an all-or-nothing thing? Like, can we take out the part that says, "That must be downloaded from the website", if that's the part that makes sense to remove, because, and just say, "This form needs filled out"? Yes, obviously, I'm new, and I don't know what we're allowed to do here.
Yeah. I mean, that's possible. We can, we can modify. Yeah, um, in, in regards to Commissioner Weaver's point, if this, my concern is, if this, if they don't follow this, it, it says, "Violation of the procedures shall be void", so meaning the application is then void. So, obviously, there's a process, and without following the process correctly, your application is void. And so, I understand the point about, you, you know, we don't like that it's very specific project notification, application, you know, we don't like the, the form is downloaded from the commission. So we don't, perhaps we don't make that reference. But they obviously need this form, and it has to be done within a certain timeframe, otherwise the application is void. So that seems to me critical, because if I bring in the application and I'm past this deadline, you're going to, somebody's going to say, "Uh-uh, you, sorry, um, it's a technicality, but nonetheless, that's what you have to do, comply with", and it, it seems to me. So I, I don't know if Commissioner Hawn wants to weigh in, uh, Commissioner Brown has thoughts?
Uh, I have two thoughts. First of all, reading this, at least you know to go to the commission website to do the form. If the commission website updates the form, then it's, it's on their website and it's being updated. So it'll automatically be updated, and it's not like, potentially, what we have here, if we have copies of it, is not updated. So I, I think it removes the liability of not having the correct form if the form is ever changed. It also notifies them where to go to find the form. Otherwise, how would they know it? Otherwise, how would they know exactly where to obtain the form to fill it out?
Really noted. Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused by the, the last, uh, two sentences. But, uh, we're tell, Chesapeake Beach is, is enacting a form or an ordinance that says Chesapeake Beach, if it does something, it will have violated Chesapeake Beach's zoning code and therefore Chesapeake Beach's action will be void. It, it seems convoluted to me. What, what are we trying to do here? I mean, where are we, are we trying to set up so that if you have to submit a project notification application to the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission? That we want to hear from them before we process, before the town finishes, even starts its processing? Because that's not the way this reads. This reads that you can have both things going on at the same time. And Chesapeake Beach can be, uh, moving along and saying, yeah, it's okay. And then the commission can come back and say, oops, nope. Hold on, I, I, it's-
So you can begin, the town could, planning commission can bring, begin its processing of an application. As long as they've received in Annapolis the, the copy of the application. So in other words, once we get an application-
I'm not talking about the commission processing. I'm talking about the commission completing it.
Oh, yeah.
Before, before we find out from the commission what their decision is made.
You can do that. And you can complete your site plan if you were speedy enough before they got back in touch with you.
And is that what we want?
Well, and that's what the state is saying they, they want. And, and they want to be able to appeal your decision if you make a decision that they feel is in violation of the critical area law. They want to be able to say, whoa, we're going to appeal that.
They, they being the commission or the applicant?
The critical area commission. The critical area commission wants to be able to have oversight over your zoning decision, your site plan decision. And the way that they learn about whether to exercise oversight or not is receiving this notification. If you, if, if that's what this is all about, it's about informing them that's, there's something of state concern going on in, in the town.
So when a applicant submits his project notification applic- application, there he doesn't necessarily, we, we don't expect him to get a response back from the planning commission saying approved or disapproved. It's just a notification to them?
What, what in practice happens, and this has happened, we get an application, we send it on to the state critical area commission. We don't send it on a special form. We don't download anything. We send the application and the-
We being the town.
The town.
And not the, not the applicant.
Applicant typically does, um, what I've done before is say, you have to do that and copy me on it. So you've demonstrated that you've done it because they're sending huge files, setting up P, PDP sites so that the state can download the files. And this, the critical area commission lets us know, okay, it's been received. So that's just a box check off. Now you can, as planning commission, take it up and consider. What this does-
Do we want to take it up before the, I mean, if they're going to have a vote on it?
They don't have a vote on it.
They aren't going to have, they aren't going to approve it or disapprove.
In practice, what they've done is they, they get it. For instance, on the, that's where I'm referring, the Rod and Reel redevelopment site. They reviewed that plan. They reviewed it at the same time planning commission did and said essentially, they have no comments. And they had, they offered some modest comments that filtered into the staff report that I wrote and that the developer probably made some adjustments for it. But they really didn't have anything of substance to change the plan. But they had a chance to affect the outcome if they wanted to. They could have come down to your meeting before you approved the plan and petitioned you against approving it. Or they could have offered new evidence into the record. Or if they, if the commission, or the, the planning commission decided the case differently than the critical area commission thought best, the critical area commission would have a chance to appeal during that 30 days after a decision is made. They could have appealed it, um, to circuit court. So, you know.
They go to court or not, not our Board of Appeals?
No, planning commission's decisions are appealed to court, not to the Board of Appeals. So, um, this is just a notification requirement. So the critical area commission can decide to influence the outcome in a way by sending comments or showing up to give testimony or appealing a decision they feel was wrongly made.
And your example assumes that it's, uh, minor modifications. I just want to comment on it. But if it's, if it's something that they're going to appeal and say, no, you can't do this, that's, that's a different kettle of fish. I mean, that's not hypothetical.
Right. And so their comment might be, we have serious grave concerns about this application. We would advise you not to approve it. And that would be evidence in the record that you would consider as you review the site plan.
But if we've already approved it, then it's-
Yeah, something like that. I'm concerned about the same thing, that they'll have an objection or that there'll be something substantive. And then we will have already approved it and look like idiot.
That's more likely to happen if we don't require the notification prior to taking up the document.
So what is, does the person with the app, the individual with the application, is it simultaneous that they send it to Chesapeake Beach Planning and Zoning Commission? And the same time it goes to the Critical Area Board? Or does?
When an application is rece- received in the town hall, if it's a major project within the critical area, then we notify the critical area commission about it.
How, how is that done?
And, and we set the date for the planning commission meeting. So, um, the way it's done is to send, in practice, it's been to send an email with as much of the application material that we can handle. What is, what additional information that may be required is then supplied by the developer. And it's not unusual for a developer to set up a meeting with the critical area commission itself and try to explain it to them because they want to remove that entity as an obstacle through their projects. Obviously, it's in their interest to, uh, diffuse any tension that the staff, the critical area commission might have. So this just sets up that process. It creates a notification requirement. And, and yes, you could, but really this sets things on the town's timeframe. It says that the town's local approving authority is sacrosanct. It's the most important. And if we at the critical area commission are too busy with other things or we're just not interested in taking up what Chesapeake wants to do, we might not even address it. But in practice, they have the staff to do it. They're competent. They don't let things slide by. They review it and send comments back to the town.
So, yes, what, what's the timeline for that? So if, if you get that application, you then email it to the, uh, the critical area commission. Suppose they, they have no issue. So do they officially, do they have a timeline? Like within 30 days, they let you know? Is it a phone call? You know, because obviously then we're going to go on. If, if we don't see any red flags, the commission would approve that. And we wouldn't even know that this other entity exists or that they could come back and say, hold the bus.
So, um, a fair thing would be to ask the, the town planner at the town, has this been sent to the critical area commission? Have you received any comments? And the response would be, yes, we received the following comments or no, we haven't received any comments. But we know it's our job to make sure the critical area commission's informed. Because if we don't, there's that standard right there says, it's, if you approve a project that was never sent to the critical area commission, your decision has been avoided. So any developer who knows development in the critical area knows the standard too. They make sure the critical area commission is informed. You know, uh, I've never seen this to be an issue. It, it, the question is, are we okay with proceeding down the path to review projects without getting any word from the critical area commission? And if you're suggesting language that compels the critical area commission to submit their comments in a certain period of time, I'm delighted to put something like that in the code to tell, because right now they're telling you what to do and everything. You could certainly say the critical area commission, uh, the planning commission will wait 30 days for comments or something to that effect.
Well, I mean, in your experience, you, you know, your 30 years of experience, what, has there ever been? I mean, typically, when do they get back? If they're, if they're going to get back with a comment or weigh in, is it within 30 days? Is it within five or?
No, it's, it's, it's within a week or so. It's, it's actually instantaneous. It's, it's, okay, we received it, we're going to review it. And, and they get back to us pretty quickly. It's, the developers has no interest in proceeding if the critical area commission has concerns. So as a practical matter, the developer will submit an application to us and say, I think in 60 days we'll be ready to go to the planning commission. In the meantime, we're going to notify the critical area commission and drive up to Annapolis and meet them. That's what happens. And that happens, that's, that's just a universal approach for any sophisticated developer is going to do that.
And you said they know, all the developers know that this, if they're building in the critical area, that they have to have approval by this board?
Well, I, most who are being advised by attorneys or, most projects that wouldn't be exempted or of such substance and scale that they have a development team. And then they know this process. It's incumbent upon them to know the process.
I think it's important to have the process codified though, because we're leaving a lot up to chance when they, when we say, they know to do this, they know to do that.
Right, right, right.
Well, they in this case is the town. It says the town shall send copies of all developments to the critical area commission. And if the town doesn't send, send it to the critical area commission, it's not the applicant's problem. What we're putting into the code is that the town is responsible for sending it to.
And the town should be responsible.
So I don't, uh, I don't see any reason for the, the paragraph that's been lined out by Chris.
I, my concern remains that I would like to know what the critical area commission said in the event that it would allow us to tweak something or rewrite something. And so I'm very uncomfortable with the idea, yeah, well, within a week or so, they generally will get back to us. And then if it's two or three weeks, do you know what I'm saying? That I don't want to waste our time without knowing their perspective.
Fair enough. You could say, as, when you're reviewing a site plan, we can't make a decision on this until we have all the information. And one of the information pieces that we're missing is the critical areas' comments. So we're going to hold our decision until that. That's a decision you can make as an administrative body, if it's fair and reasonable, you know? So you have that authority already. This is just a notification requirement. And I'm perfectly fine to see it in the code. It's, it's fine. But it's just a notification requirement. It just puts the critical area commission on notice that we're doing something and that they have a chance to review and take a crack at it. But they don't want to hold themselves to a certain period of time to get back to you. You know, they don't want to say, uh, the critical area commission shall have 60 days. And they also don't want to slow your, unnecessarily interfere with your processes either. It may be a simple thing that, or an emergency thing, or something of critical importance that the town has to review and approve. And, you know, of the, so they, they don't want to disrupt it. They just want to be notified of it and decide how to act, um, in their own judgment or whether to act.
Well, then it seems that we should make a, uh, a motion to modify this language. And if we're going to, to reflect that, uh, or vote, make a motion and then have everyone vote on the motion, whether we want to actually, uh, have the commission weigh in before we proceed as the town commission. But the language hasn't been-
But before you do that, um, in their site plan procedures and the zoning ordinance, the general site plan procedures, it has, it crafts the role of the zoning administrator to review the application and assemble comments from outside agencies and to supply them with the application to the planning commission. So it's, it's, it's in, it's in other parts of the zoning ordinance. So I, is it possible that, uh, something might come to you without having been presented yet to the critical area commission or sent up there in the mail or through email? Yes, it's possible. Is it possible that no one will have, will read this in 10 years from now? I mean, it's just possible. But the, but it's also possible that we might not send it to the county or to the Corps of Engineers or to any number of other agencies that do the same thing. This is just the only part of state law that requires us to notify an agent. That you're basically saying, okay, we will notify that agency. And if we don't, and then approve something, we've made a mistake and the approval is null and void. That's the only thing unique about this. I would, I would say that maybe I've confused things. The, the part of this point that I, that I didn't like is the, is the one that says that you have to download a certain form from the website. I thought that was just impractical and, and I didn't want your future town planner to have to go to planning and zoning jail because they didn't use the right form. And then the whole project is been null and void. Or the town gets sued because they didn't file it on the right form. You know, I don't want, I want to protect the town. So that's, I didn't necessarily mean to cross all these, this aspect out and that. But that was the most important thing that I think should be eliminated. But I hear what Commissioner Blackwell's, Blackwell's saying and I'm perfectly fine leaving it in. But I, I just wanted it to, I didn't want to create a liability for the municipality on something so technical. And if, if you think that a developer wouldn't exploit that technicality, you're wrong. They would. And I didn't want to set the town up for failure on technicality issues like this. That's, that's the reason I-
Madam Chairman, may I ask another question?
Yes.
This application is going to come to us in the form of a site plan. Is that correct? I mean, that doesn't, there is no other form it would come in.
There literally would be a like two or three page filled in application, but it's a site plan. Then, then the big site plan is-
And there is a section 290-25, which is critical area site plan preparation. Shouldn't this be addressed in that section of the code rather than 290-17, which is what we're looking at here?
Well, one would think, but I'm, I'm thinking all the critical area language ought to be, to the extent that we can put into that, the main body of the, this, in other words, this whole, much of the critical area stuff that we can get into one chapter of the plan would be helpful.
So are we talking about eliminating, uh, 290-25?
Essentially.
And we're going to eliminate 290 attachment, 290-attachment for criti- critical area fines to?
Probably update those and keep them in the zoning ordinance.
And there's, there's more than, than what we have in front of us.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, so I understand your point of the form and the liability it potentially puts the town. If we remove it, what, how would they know technically where to go if we remove the, the critical site plan in 2090-15? And we put it here? Like, so we're removing this where it says, go to this website?
Yeah.
We are removing the preparation in 2090-25? So if you have a new developer, how would they know what to do?
Well, the, the, the reference to the site plan in 20, or 290-25, that may, might be advisable to keep that in there. I'm, and that's, I don't want to get, go down that road yet or not. But here, this reference to going to the website for a special, special form is a very discreet, specific way of notification. My view is the town, as long as the town notifies the critical area commission and receives a receipt that the thing was notified, I'm happy with that. And I, and I'd like the town to leave it at that. So that if the town notifies the state critical area commission- by writing an email or sending a letter or sending a package UPS with the big plan, that is satisfactory. As long as they receive a receipt showing that Critical Area received it, I want to, I think that's enough. I think it's easy for the town planner or somebody else not to be able to find that form on the website, or the website's down, or, or it's, it's not available anymore, or they, they just think it's expedient to notify the commission in a faster way or to drive the materials up and put it on someone's desk. I just didn't want there to be a technical issue that's easy to not adhere to. That has no substance, it's not related to the policies and procedures of this document, it's just a specific way of notification. And failing to do it would mean that everything you do has been null and void, and that could be potentially very risky. So again, it's just my way of, but maybe I'm interjecting something that's probably not relevant. And maybe it's something for municipal attorney to advise the town council on. But just an ordinance drafting, I like to minimize those types of things that get towns tripped up on.
I think that getting tripped up on crossing your Ts and dotting your Is is a good thing when it comes to developing very large things in the critical area.
Not getting tripped up on.
Well, no, I, I think that, no, I think that if there's a notification process that the Critical Area Commission has recommended in their model ordinance, and I think you just recited tho, that language, I think we should leave it in there and leave that notification process that they prefer, along with the forms that they prefer in our ordinance, so that we can ensure that we have Critical Area Commission oversight because we, I believe that we need it.
Well, there's a motion, there's been a second. Is there any modification, too? It seems that the, the downloaded from the commissioner's website seems to be causing the consternation, most specifically if we remove that and keep the, the rest of the citation. Is, is that what we want to vote?
So my motion is to retain the language suggested in the Critical Area Model Ordinance in Section E.
Right, so it would be that entire paragraph, and my suggestion would be to break that paragraph into three individual points. So it reads better, so it's clear what happened. So I think you agree with that, right? So it looked more like the twenty eighteen model ordinance rather.
Okay. All right, are we ready to vote?
So the issue is whether to keep the highlighted area or to remove the highlighted area.
Correct.
I mean, that is the issue, but the motion is to retain the language suggested in the model ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Which is the. The Critical Area Commission, and to allow the town planner to break it down into further points for easier reading.
But the language will stay, the highlighted language will remain the same, that Chris is just gonna reframe it, but the language will remain the same, that's the motion.
Correct.
Okay, so let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Of retaining it.
Of retaining it.
Okay.
Say aye.
Aye.
What is that, three? One, two, three, okay.
For vote.
I'm voting to retain it. All opposed to retaining it? They, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so it's four to three, that passes.
Okay. On page six, off of page six, we corrected that, we removed the reference to disabled citizens and said individuals with disabilities. Commissioner Braw, that was your suggestion?
Yes.
Okay. And then in B and C at the bottom of that page, I used the term approving authority and approving authority. Because that particular approving authority would do that action.
I have a question, or do, is somewhere that approving authority identified? I'm just curious.
Well, if the approving authority is the Planning Commission or site plan, and if it's site plan, you would do it, if it's.
Oh, from previous reference, okay, that's fine.
Then the next several pages are deleted because they're the non-water-dependent structures on piers, which you decided to remove. It brings us up to the intensely developed areas. Those are the areas that are shown as red on the map, and these standards all are, are general standards that apply to that. I noticed a change between the two model ordinances. And since we're using the twenty twenty-two model ordinance, I saw on page ten that there was a paragraph. It didn't show up in the other earlier thing. And it says, the town shall develop a strategy to reduce the impacts of water quality generated by the existing development. And says what the assessment ought to do. I have never seen this before. I didn't know where it came from or why it was placed in here. And it seemed so out of place, it had, it, all these standards are about development activities within a critical area, and then all of a sudden it says the town should do this. And sure, if the state Critical Area Commission is mandating that the town shall do something, that's fine. But I'd like to ask the Critical Area Commission what they mean by this. And, and it doesn't have to be in this section of the code. And, and it might be better put at another part of the code or not put in the zoning code at all. Instead, the town should just do it, if that's the requirement. So I struck it for now, and something that we need to return to.
I can support that because I don't, it's not really telling anything about a site plan, it's just saying, develop a strategy. We don't have one.
And it's for existing.
Right.
I still don't understand, this surprised me and I, okay, if everybody's okay with that, I don't know if needs a vote, but I will get back to the Critical Area Commission with that comment. Number seven there at the bottom, which would actually be number six now, no use shall be permitted in the IDA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district, you approve that. And that's, that standard applies to each of these three critical area zones. And now we're on the limited development areas, and if you go all the way to page thirteen, item E.
Chris, if I could go back to page ten, number three. Is that, is the Comar a floor or a ceiling? Land use activities within the IDA will be managed in accordance with land use policies of Comar. Umptee Glots, does that mean that if their land use activities are less restricted than the town's, that you can use those, that criteria in the IDA?
I'm stumped and I, I don't know that reference in Comar, so I, I just don't know how to answer, Larry.
You know, I haven't read that section of the Comar.
Right.
Oh, I think.
As I suggest, I think we all need to read those sections that we're referencing here.
It kind of gets to the earlier point, so as an example, that's one that we want to have set in front of you so you can see. And the same standard applies to the LDA as well.
So, right, these O threes and O fours and O fives correspond to the IDA, LDA, RCA in Comar, so as, as long as that one matches with the IDA, it would be the appropriate one to use.
See, the same language is on the next page, I don't.
Two. Right, for, for the LDA. So let's find out what, in accordance with the land use policies of Comar mean. And see if it means anything different than what is already in this model ordinance. I think the minute should show that we want to evaluate Comar twenty-seven, oh one, oh two, oh three. And comparable one for the LDA, right, and for RCA, too. Okay. So if we could keep chugging along then, on page thirteen, remove the words Planning Commission or its designee and put approving authority. Because sometimes the approving authority won't be the Planning Commission. Page fourteen. I just did some.
Are these, are these lot coverage limits on page thirteen more restrictive or less restrictive than what we've proposed on the zoning code?
More restrictive. So if you're in the LDA, you face a much more restrictive lot coverage standard. You may, for instance, have a lot and only be able to cover thirty-five percent, but within the IDA, you're limited to fifteen percent.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, and within the LDA, sorry.
Vice Chair Greenwald.
Can I ask, Chris, a question about number seven? You've crossed, that may be allowed. That particular, number seven on page fourteen, I'm concerned about allowing, if you read it, if the extent of the site, the, the area extent of the site limits the application of reforestation standards in this section, the town may allow an applicant to plant off-site or pay in fee in lieu of planting. That bothers me. I mean, I'm always against, you know, in lieu of, or fee in lieu of plantings, but now we're allowing to plant off-site. What is off-site? I mean, you know, Towson, I mean, what, I mean, what are we talking here as far as where somebody can then?
Determines it.
Replant.
Yeah.
Can we be more specific? Can we take away the fee in lieu of, or what, what are we restrained by here?
This is a bit of a relief valve for the situations where some big replanting is required and the site's just not big enough to meet it. You could put a standard in there that said the first priority for off-site planting shall be within the LDA elsewhere within the same watershed. You know, that means that the planting should be having the same environmental benefits.
Well, it seems to me the, the fee in lieu sets up a, an escape. So it provides an avenue that, hey, yeah, we'll just pay the, we'll pay a fee and we're gonna take down these trees. And maybe I've misread that, but it seems this opens up an avenue to give someone an option to, instead of, you know, they can plant off-site or they can pay a fee in lieu of planting. And then, then we now get in the whole, you know, possibility, well, this tree wasn't as big as the other one, that were the, the surrounding ones, and what's acceptable. I just feel like we should remove the avenue for the escape.
The town does have, does now have a fee in lieu program, and it has a balance. I don't know how much is in it now. But over time, there has been real money generated in that, and the town has used that, that funding to do some really environmentally friendly things that may have been more beneficial than planting trees on private property. For instance, there was the purple line, which is a kind of discharge, the, kind of the conveyance of discharge from the wastewater treatment plant somewhere else, and I think water, the, the fields at Kellam's Field or something like that, rather than water going out in bay was actually using to, as a nitrogen fertilizer to the fields to restore stormwater outfalls in the town. So it's become a fun, important funding source. But the, the critical thing is, you could only do that if the, the extent of the site limits the reforestation. You might, if you wanted to minimize how the fee in lieu works, you can say something to the fact that only if off-site planting is found not to be practical or available, then the last resort is paying a fee in lieu. But I, I think generally you want to, the preference is to get planting on the lots where, where the impacts are. But it's not always just simply not possible.
Well, we haven't determined what plant off-site means, is that correct? What, what that pertains to?
The, the fee in lieu program, town's fee in lieu program has very strict standards about where the money can be used. And you've got to go through this whole list of requirements, that they have to be planted within the critical area, most part of, critical part of the critical area, then not there, you can, then you can eventually use it for street trees and stormwater management retrofit programs and other water quality benefits.
But this says, an applicant may plant off-site or pay a fee in lieu of. So in other words, they can plant somewhere else or do the, so I mean, the, the off, the, the problem is it's too vague to say off-site without being specific. So we should change off-site to within the LDA is what we should be doing, right?
Sure.
Now, I, I agree, I, we always get upset with the fee in lieu of, and I wish we could, you know, change that somehow, but.
Then only if there's no space available for off-site LDA, perhaps then you can make a fee in lieu payment.
Yeah.
You know.
The question I have about that is, who determines what off-site? Is it the town that determines whether or not this developer can meet the needs of reforestation in LDA?
Yeah, so.
And then we could say to them, we can't figure out how you're gonna make it work, you're gonna have to pay a fee in lieu of?
Yeah. I mean, well, we would say, it shouldn't be the town's job to go around, drive around, find spots where people would be willing to allow trees to be planted on the property. But the onus is on the applicant, and the question is how strict does the town want to be? And you might say, there's, we'll, we'll give you sixty days or ninety days, or you get a hundred eighty days, but we're not acting on this until you come to, to viable plans, which may mean they have to work out a deal with somebody else to buy property, or they plant trees on town property in the LDA. Maybe, and that's actually worked in some municipalities. But you put the onus on the applicant to find the location for the tree planting. And if, if, in the judgment of the town, it's just not possible, it's just inconceivable, or it's unduly burdensome, and it could be, you would say, okay, well, the last resort is to pay the fee in lieu.
Chris, you suggested some language that indicated findings. And so would that then put the discretion of whether or not they could do that in the hands of the Planning Commission as opposed to how it's worded now?
I think the discretion is always with the approving authority, whether it's zoning administrator or the Planning Commission. So if you want to make it clear, you can, but it's, without question, you're the decision maker when you're reviewing.
Whether or not they can.
Yeah.
Use.
Right.
The plant off-site or fee in lieu.
Yeah.
Regardless of how you are this.
If you're not persuaded, you, you could say, you haven't shown us any evidence that you, you're just coming here for convenience and wanting to write a check, but you haven't shown us any evidence that you've contacted property owners or that you've found a repairing environment where you could restore buffer or that, you know? And you could say, we're not gonna review this application or approve this application until you submit evidence so that we can make this. so that we can make this finding. That's kind of how you could act as administrative body. And if you want to beef that up by using the word finding, the planning commission shall establish a finding that.
That's kind of what I was getting with, just to ensure that it is done.
What, what would you want to include on that? I was going to just, would you, would it be okay to say within the town of Chesapeake Beach at least to have, you know, some more, something more specific than just off-site?
I liked it.
Yeah, let's just make it something.
You don't want them sending the money up to deal or.
Right, exactly. I think, I think if I could make, yeah, if I could just make a motion to insert, to plant off-site within the town of Chesapeake Beach, just within the town of Chesapeake Beach.
In the LDA or RCA within.
Right. Within the LDA, within, within the LDA.
Or RCA.
Or RCA.
Yeah, because that's even a more sensitive part of the environment.
Okay, or R.
Of Chesapeake Beach? Yeah. Wait a second on that. Is there any further discussion by the commissioners?
Can you repeat the proposal again?
Vice Chair, do you want to repeat your motion?
Plant off-site within the LDA or the, the RCA, the RCA, right?
Within the LDA or RCA of Chesapeake Beach?
The RCA of Chesapeake Beach, the town of Chesapeake Beach. Did you get that?
So we're eliminating in lieu of.
You're just, all we're doing is.
We're just, instead of plant off-site, we're being more specific.
Plant within, I should say, take off, off-site, to plant within the LDA or RCA of the town of Chesapeake Beach.
The, the fee in lieu remains.
Everything remains.
We've just, we've just been more specific what plant off-site. We've identified that more specifically. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Continuing that paragraph, could I suggest one addition towards the end of it? So if it says the, the town may allow an applicant to plant off-site within the LDA or RCA within the town of Chesapeake Beach, can I add, or upon finding that the off-site planting is not feasible to pay a fee in lieu of planting? That gets to Commissioner Blackwell's issue. In other words, you've got to have some kind of finding. It can't just be, I just can't do it, guys. I don't have time to find them.
And what's your wording, or upon finding that?
Or, or upon finding that off-site planting is infeasible.
It's not feasible.
Or not feasible. Then it continues, pay fee in lieu of planting. In other words, the town.
A fee of the, a fee in lieu will be paid?
A fee in lieu of, of planting, just the way it's written, or pay a fee in lieu.
Oh, okay.
Pay a fee.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Chris's language that he just read.
All in favor? The opposed? Motion passed. Sharon, do you have that?
Thank you.
On page fifteen, I added item thirteen. It says, no use shall be permitted in the LDA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district. That follows your decision at a previous meeting. Number four on page sixteen at the top.
Can we stop? I have a question about number on page fifteen.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So we have resource conservation areas and we have number two, and it references Comar twenty-seven dot oh one dot oh two dot oh five, which is Comar related to the RCA. That's for land use activities. And number three, we have development activity within the resource conservation shall be consistent with the requirements and standards for the limited development areas as specified in Comar dash twenty-seven dot oh one dash oh two dot oh four in this ordinance. So I guess my question is, why is development activity in this section going to be governed by the LDA requirements if it's in the RCA? And can we switch that back to the first Comar, which references the RCA?
Well, there are two different things. The, the first reference refers to land use activities. And there we're talking about uses, like how property can be used. And number three, we're talking about development activities, and that's referring to the essentially amount of lot coverage and reforestation that's necessary if you take trees down. So those standards that we just talked about, about replanting and finding fee in lieu and all, that, what this means is essentially that those standards apply in the RCA.
Right, but they are lesser. And so the standards for Comar or the LDA have a different density than the standards for Comar and the RCA. And so I would prefer that we keep it consistent and use the Comar standards for the RCA and item number three.
Are you saying that there are standards for development activity in the point oh five section for the RCA?
I'm saying that yes, the, the standards, the Comar reference for the oh five section is a reference to the RCA and everything that governs it. The Comar standards for oh four is for the LDA, and they do talk about densities of development. And so I think it was like a four, one per quarter acre or whatever it is in the LDA.
Right.
Residential density standard in Comar twenty-seven dot oh one dot oh two dot oh four, but in the RCA, it is a one to twenty residential density standard. And so I think that our goal was to leave it at the one to twenty density. And so that we would then need to change this Comar reference back to the reference. Yes.
And I would only say this, and I'm not quite a hundred percent sure, this answer is right, but I think point oh two, point oh five is just dealing with land use stuff. And point oh two, point oh four is just dealing with development activities. So the, the issue of density is in there. So like, that's why you turn to the next couple of pages and talks about that twenty unit, twenty acre density. I don't know why the critical area law is structured this way, but, but what I would suggest is that I find out and share with each of the commissioners that both of these references in Comar so that we can get to the bottom of this.
I'm just going to look it up because I did look this up and that's why I highlighted it. Twenty, section twenty-seven dot oh one dot oh two dot oh two, oh four, limited development areas. That's, that's what that section references. If I change it to oh five.
No, no, no. So, so like, read those standards.
It says resource conservation areas.
Even though it says point oh four.
Oh five references resource conservation areas and it lists the criterias.
Right.
And oh four is the reference to the LDA.
And.
Oh, three is the IDA.
Yeah, but if you go through that oh four section, you're going to see some standards that refer to, quote, development and development activities.
Right, and the LDA.
Yeah. And, and the section point oh five probably doesn't have those same types of standards because it's presumed that really not going to have much development.
No, it has the standard of the one to twenty acres, like I said.
Right, because that's a land use standard.
On page sixteen as well, density.
Development activity within the resource conservation area shall be consistent with the criteria for limited development areas and the regulation. Okay. And that is in section oh five. So it appears that you are correct.
We have a winner.
We do have, we might have a winner, yes.
Thirty years.
Let's have some more cake.
Thirty years is valid.
It works.
It was just a hunch.
Very good. Let me read it again. You passed the.
You may go to Annapolis.
Annapolis asked us to give you that question and then we are going to forward the answer. So, well done.
He knows his Comar regs, four and five.
Oh, I lost it.
Keep going.
Yes.
Keep going.
So fifteen, I just made a couple of wording changes because I didn't like the way the model said things. It's, is as follows, I changed the following. I think that's worth even mentioning.
Chris, on page fifteen.
Yeah.
Are there, are there any industrial facilities currently in the limited development area?
No.
And why don't we delete paragraph twelve? On page fifteen.
I'm not adverse to that.
Central that it could in the future have one?
There's theoretical.
The code that we passed recently allow for industrial facilities in the limited development area?
It don't allow industrial facilities within the town. Period. So the only way that you could is if the town were to amend the zoning ordinance to allow a certain development activity. In which case, this would be a failsafe, a, a, a guardrail for that.
I'll make a motion to delete paragraph twelve.
We have a second. Discussion?
Personally feel that Chris's perspective makes sense if the town were to do something, and this would allow us to still limit what could be done. It's a fail safe, is what he said. And as much as it might not apply right now, one never knows.
Any other commissioners comment?
I guess my, my concern is that industrial, the word industrial can, can be vague, I think, maybe. And it could turn into, it could start out one thing and then just gradually become more industrial. So I guess, I think a failsafe is, is a good term to use here and we need to probably protect ourselves. So I would leave it in myself.
What would be your definition of industrial?
It would encompass uses such as warehousing, manufacturing, and comparable uses that involve the processing, changing the form of something into something usable, usually has an impact that extends off-site, or has a potential to be extend off-site like dust or noise or air pollution.
Oh.
Smells.
I would tend to agree with Jan and Chris. It does not hurt to remain striking.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of keeping item number twelve?
No, I think it's eliminating.
Oh, eliminating. All in favor of eliminating it? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
The nays have it, it will retain, remain?
Okay, so going to the next page then, sixteen. Under density, four, a. I added, except as may be further restricted by the underlying zoning district. So while the state critical area commission says you can have one unit per twenty acres in the RCA, that's not something the town agrees with. And that's what the statement says, except as may be further restricted by the underlying zoning district. And as you know, the underlying zoning districts, in the case of the town, prohibit housing. Seems like a fair modification. The next amendment. The local jurisdiction may not authorize a variance to the maximum density. Actually can't remember why this was removed or if we specifically removed this at a meeting, previous meeting. Oh yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah. So, and I'm trying to reconstruct my thinking there or our thinking. We definitely in item B wanted to eliminate all reference to additional dwelling units, accessory dwellings within RCA. I mean, if conceivably you were, had a house in RCA, this would not allow you to do an additional house. But I can't remember for the life of me why the first part is struck, stricken. A land, a local jurisdiction may not authorize a variance to the maximum density of one dwelling unit per twenty acres. I guess maybe it just didn't seem like it was necessary, given the fact that housing is not even permitted. But in many respects, that's consistent with Larry's logic. It's not necessary to deal with industrial if it's not permitted in the underlying zone. But that's how we left it, following that meeting several months ago.
So you're saying unstrike it? Or that we could, because every area in the resource, I think the conversation was that the resource conservation area, the RCA, the critical area wasn't necessarily the resource, all encompassing of the resource conservation areas in town. So we have some RCA areas that are not, I mean, that are not resource conservation by our map.
No. We have some resource conservation areas that are not critical area RCA. So it works to our favor. I think we're, we're good with that.
Right.
In other words, we don't have any RCA out there where you can divide, subdivide into one to twenty. It's impossible in Chesapeake Beach.
Right.
Having said that, just like I guess the previous point.
I get soaked.
If the town council were to amend the zoning ordinance or future planning commission suggested it, to allow housing within the RCA or within RC zone, then the state would acknowledge that that's eligible for subdivision and housing at one to twenty. And this says that you can't vary that. In other words, can't make it even more dense. Can't say one per five acres or something. So maybe as a failsafe, again, it's worth leaving it. So removing this strike through, just in the event that in the future, the laws change, that basically says one to twenty is one to twenty. There's no variation on that. You can't seek a modification from the Board of Appeals. I have a hardship, I need more density than one to twenty. No, it's not the way it's going to work. You don't have a chance to prove that point.
I like that advice. Does anybody else have that advice?
Which is consistent with the logic of the industrial thing.
Yep.
Yep.
So consistency is good.
The motion would be to unstrike everything that's been.
No, just that first sentence, under the footnote that.
Two C eight, maybe a local jurisdiction? So we're just eliminating, the motion is to eliminate that sentence only?
No, to eliminate the strikeout, to retain the.
You're going to retain it, but take out the strike?
That's right.
And what about the additional highlighted? Are we removing the strikeouts from them as well?
That's permissive. That allows more development in town.
Okay. So we're only removing the strikeout from the, the first sentence, a local. Okay. So we're only removing the strikeout from the, the first sentence, a local jurisdiction may not authorize. All right.
Do we have a motion for that?
Do we have a motion?
Boy, will you move me there?
Oh, I can, I can do it. I will motion to remove the strike through of the words, a local jurisdiction may not authorize a variance to the maximum density of one dwelling unit per twenty acres. Leave that section as written.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Then we'll vote.
A local jurisdiction, that's awkward language, isn't it?
That would be the Board of Appeals, I assume, right?
It's better change it to the town.
The town.
Town.
The town of Chesapeake Beach?
Chesapeake Beach may not authorize a variance to the, but a local jurisdiction.
So do you want to amend your motion?
I will amend my motion to read, the town of Chesapeake Beach may not authorize a variance to the maximum density of one dwelling unit per twenty acres.
Second.
I'm seconding, second.
Is seconding the modification?
Yes.
To the motion. Any further discussion? Let's vote.
Do you need me to resend the first one or you can just write it the way you heard it? You're good. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All in favors have it. No opposed?
Okay, on the next page, item five, in this version, the 2022 version, it used the word impressed rather than what I thought was the right word encumbered. It says, in any agricultural easement program to convey real property impressed with easement. Maybe that's a technical legal term, but in the previous version, they used the word encumbered and it seems like you can encumber a land with an easement. I don't think you impress it with an easement. And previously you had agreed to remove reference or residential development because you don't want to call attention to that because as a matter of fact, it's not allowed. So you're not going to say it's allowed. And C, rather than saying additional industrial commercial facilities may not be located in the RCA, we said shall not be. And in item D, suggesting language, it says, any institutional recreational or educational use permitted by right or special exception in the RC district shall be allowed in the RCA. So that technically means if the town wanted to do an educational center or one of those handful of uses that you would allow in the RC district, it wouldn't just be outright prohibited because it was in a critical area. So for instance, if there's a tract of land that had shoreline frontage and it was RCA, critical area, and the town wanted to build a, a educational center or oyster cultivation museum or something right on the water on a pier, you can do that. We don't want to prevent that from taking place. So that's what this add on is meant to do.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just looked up under, on page seventeen, under five, where we changed impressed to encumbered. And evidently there is, there's a legal, why it says real property impressed. They're using it in case text law.
Impressed is a legal term?
The, the law recognized the distinction between property impressed with the public. So it's legal terminology.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Any objection to keeping it then?
No.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that? Let's, Commissioner Han, will you make a motion?
I make a motion on page seventeen, under five, to, to strike out or unstrike impressed and remove encumbered.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Be reading the. The word encumbered means great to, even though it's a legal term, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's good for people reading.
They can look it up.
You're saying Kelly, impressed is a legal term compared to encumbered?
That's what she said.
I, I I don't know. When, when, when in doubt, I would always default to the language that was suggested.
Original language?
Yeah, when in doubt.
Impressed.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's legal terminology, there's a reason that it's, and.
I know Kelly does this for a living, so.
Well, then.
And I know Chris does too. So it's tough.
No, I, it used to be, in one version of the model, it said encumbered and this one it said impressed. So I just went back. It's used the current model and.
Okay.
Sure.
So any further discussion? All in favor of retaining, removing the strike through and keeping impressed and removing the word encumbered, say aye? All opposed? Two, two opposed. Motion passes.
Item E was stricken. It's commercial, institutional, industrial, solar and generating facilities may be permitted in accordance with Comar. Saying irrespective of what state law might allow, those uses are not suitable for the RCA. And then F says new commercial, industrial institution, new commercial, industrial, institutional uses shall not be permitted resource conservation area, except as provided in the town's growth allocation provisions, which we'll get to later, or as listed below. So these are several exceptions. In other words, there are some types of uses that you would allow in the RCA. You would allow a home occupation as accessory use on a residential property as provided for in the town zoning ordinance. And you would allow any institutional, recreational and educational use permitted by right or special exception in this ordinance's resource conservation zoning district. And that gets to the point that we made earlier. But remember you removed all these other things, bed and breakfast, gun club, daycare, group home, cemetery. So the town is going to be more strict about the uses that are allowed in the RCA than the state. And that's what this, this does.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Yes.
So on page seventeen, F. It says new commercial, industrial and institutional uses shall not be permitted in resource conservation areas, except as provided for the, for in the town's growth allocation provision or as listed below. And there's a number ten behind it. And on page eighteen, you have ten struck out. So we're going to strike it out on F two. We're going to strike that ten out.
Yeah, because I think that's a footnote that just gives guidance to us when we're drafting this document. This is a, the local jurisdiction may propose additional RCA uses for consideration. In other words, you can allow more uses in the RCA. Or that you can move this to another part of the ordinance.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. When I look at the footnote of number ten, I see the whole footnote of number ten struck out, but then you're citing it back here on page seventeen as a ten. Am I misreading it?
Right, the reference has been struck.
Yeah, it's, it just happens to be in the, the document. And so I struck the number ten and then it strikes the actual language. So it's going to be gone.
But on seventeen, the ten should be struck through if we don't have.
Oh, is that what you?
It's got the ten.
An F in number ten should be struck through because we now have no citation for ten.
Right. And so also, like when you look under six, we have eight and eight was struck, nine was struck, ten was struck, but it's still, they're still left on the page on seventeen. So they need to be struck.
You're right.
Oh, yep.
Eight, nine and ten.
There's eight, where's nine?
Nine is six A.
Six, two.
Oh.
So under six is eight, under six A is nine. And six F is ten.
So eight, nine and ten are all going to be struck.
We need the word existing and I, or does it matter? Home occupation as an accessory use on an existing residential property and as provided for in the town zoning ordinance. Is that inferred? Where are you? I'm on F.
Seventeen, two up.
Yep.
Oh, there's seventeen I, I mean, it's FI on seventeen and then we flip over and then we have another comment. Is that number two or is it continuation of one?
No, it would be little I, little II. Number two, Roman numeral two.
Yeah, I think me and Kelly are on, I actually interrupted you, Kelly. So finish. You were editing. You're saying that this area on page eighteen, you don't know what it belongs to, right?
So are we? We're eliminating the reference to footnote eight, footnote nine, footnote ten.
Yep.
Is that it?
And the, the red text on page eighteen that begins any institutional would be assigned the, the roman numeral II.
Okay. So do we have a motion? I'll make a motion. Uh, that we eliminate footnote eight on page seventeen, footnote nine, and footnote ten on page seventeen. And on page eighteen, any institutional, recreational, educational use permitted by right or special exception in this ordinance's resource conservation, Perin M. Perin RC zoning district. And that will be renumbered II.
We'll take off and at the end of I. We take off the word and at the end of five then, page seventeen. So at the end of I, the word and, we eliminate. Because and, doesn't and go with?
Ah, that's, that's where it goes. That's where it goes.
Okay. All right. So on page seventeen.
You could just resend unless we're.
We're going to resend the, the motion I just made and I'm going to make a new motion. And the new motion refers to page seventeen and footnote eight, nine and ten. We are going to remove them and then we are adding on page eighteen, oh, I'm sorry. And we're removing under FI, at the end of the, at the end of I, the word and. And on page eighteen, we are renumbering with II. The language, any institutional, recreational and educational use permitted by right or special exception in this ordinance's resource conservation, Perin M. Perin RC zoning district.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Continue, Chris.
Okay. Terms of timing tonight, I was wondering if it'd be advisable for me to skip to something new to, to talk about it, to prep you to, so when you review this, you'll know what you're, you're reading.
Always could.
Because what we're doing, going through is like changes that been made and I know we're refining it, which is good. But might be helpful for me to talk a little bit about a couple of other parts of this.
Absolutely not.
No. You want to keep plugging away?
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. That's fine. Go ahead. Certainly if we have to review, when we review it in your absence, it, I'm sure will be insightful.
Okay, so I wanted to go to, let's turn to page.
This concludes critical area resident regulations and now we're in review, the new business under review draft ordinance.
Well, actually I was going to stay within the critical area.
Okay.
But I know you have other things on the agenda, but I just wanted to touch on growth allocation. So you understand what that is if you don't now. And also highlight one set of changes I made so that you retain the ability to do a public peer if the town wants to do it.
Good.
So, and so growth allocation begins on page. Just as I was about to say it, I closed my book. Okay, page thirty six. And I just wanted to, for everybody's clarification, explain what growth allocation is. And when you read this, you'll know what we're talking about. You've seen that, the, the critical area map and it shows the three colors. Those things are not locked in stone forever. They can be modified. What is red can become yellow and what is green can become yellow. I'm sorry, what is yellow can become red. And what is green can become yellow or red. In other words, these properties can be upzoned, which restricted now can be unrestricted. And there's a process for that and that's called growth allocation. And every jurisdiction in Maryland is limited to the amount of changes they can make. So if you have, if you have an acre of, of land that's LDA and someone wants to upzone it to LDA so they can, they don't have to worry about preserving all the forest on the site, they clear cut something and put a big building on it. They can ask for a growth allocation and that one acre parcel can become IDA, then it can be developed free and clear. Okay. But if the town only has one acre of growth allocation, it has a decision to make. Do we want to give that one acre of growth allocation to that, just that one person? Or do we want to hold on to it for something really special in the future that might really be needed? So that's kind of a, a simple example. In actuality, the town had a lot of growth allocation at one point. And over the course of town, of time, it granted upzonings. And now it's down to fifty eight point three seven acres of growth allocation remaining. That means fifty eight point three seven acres of the yellow area in the town could conceivably become red. And it could be developed in a way that most of the town is developed already. Okay. That's not suggested and it's not recommended and it wouldn't be consistent with the comprehensive plan. But like any zoning law, there's always an ability for jurisdiction to make changes if it feels it's in its interest. And that's what state law allows municipalities to do. But it, here it caps it. So it, the town had a limited amount of growth allocation and used a lot of it. Now it's down to fifty eight acres. Uh, so growth allocation is really the process for upzoning land. So just remember that when you get to that point. And then.
And by upzoning, you mean that it can change from yellow to red or?
Yeah, or green to yellow, from less restrictive or enough for more restrictive.
More restrictive to less.
Is that if we annexed, would we annex and then also be tied to fifty eight point three seven acres? Or will we annex and be allowed more growth?
Yeah. So if, if you annexed a lot of RCA, you could increase your growth allocation because growth allocation is derived from, in part by the amount of RCA you have. So five. So 5% of your RCA acreage is devoted to growth allocation. If you have 100 acres of RCA, you have five, five acres that you can use to upzone land within the town, within the critical area. So again, conceivably, if the town annexed a big RCA natural area, it would give itself the ability to change some of that to density, dense development, or to use it somewhere else in the town.
And it's, growth allocation is apples to apples, whether it's LDA to IDA, or IDA, or RCA to LDA? By acreage, not by intensity?
No, it's always a change in intensity, it's always a change from one classification to another, but.
The acreage is what is calculated?
Yes. So right now, we have 58 acres, if a project came in that was 60 acres, we'd say, no, we only have 58 to give you. And the town might decide never to give up its 58 acres, it might want to hold it. It might never have a reason, a justification to give up the ability, it might always hold out the possibility for something in the future, some project of great magnitude, or you might use growth allocation to build a, um, a hospital or medical center that was essential to be in a town, for instance. Some jurisdictions have used growth allocations for public facilities, like wastewater treatment plants, and but more likely, it's a developer, so if you look at Richfield Station, a big chunk of Richfield Station used growth allocation in order to develop the lower part of the, the townhouse community that reaches down close to the marsh back here, all growth allocation, and, um, if you look at your zoning map, or your critical area map, you'll see some oddly placed IDA areas, like why is that IDA all the up there in Cox Road? Because they got growth allocation approved sometime between 85 and, let's say, 95, or something like that. And now growth allocation would allow development along Cox Road that wouldn't have been allowed prior, so if you look at, you see mostly yellow, then you see like a red square, yeah, the town approved the growth allocation.
So you said, uh, growth allocation is 5% of the RCA? If we expanded, uh, the RC district in, uh, in our zoning discussions, but that didn't change the RCA?
Yeah, no change there.
But, uh, how much, how much of the growth allocation has already been used?
Uh, 90 acres or so. So, we get 5%, you get credited, you get a credit of 5% of your total RCA acreage, plus Calvert County gave the town 100 acres, and that's how it's set up in state law, that the counties allocate a certain amount of growth allocation to their municipalities, why that happened, I don't know, but the number that the town started with was 100 acres from Calvert County.
Okay.
So that 100 plus, uh, I think was roughly seven acres or something like that in RCA, meant that, um, the town started, or maybe it was more than that, I, I can't remember the exact numbers anymore, but the number now, reported by the Critical Area Commission, is down to 58.37. And over, since the 1980s, since 85, they've gradually chipped away at this, and the remaining is 58 acres.
Since 1980, so it was 100, now we're down to 58?
It was over 100, uh, now we're down to 58.
Okay.
There's.
Well, you said, you said, uh, the county gave us 100, and then our RC zone had 5% of that on top of that 100.
Right.
So, uh, and we've used 90, um,
I think we started with around 140 total acreage, uh, and we used roughly 90, I think, we're down to 58, and those are very broad numbers, but.
Oh, only 40 of that came from the 5% of the RC zone, since 100 was given to us by Calvert County.
Right.
So, 40 acres was 1/20th of our RC zone. 5%, 1/20th. So, so roughly 800 acres was in the RC zone.
RCA zone.
RCA. If we expanded, the, I, I realize you have to go to the critical commission to expand the RCA, but if you expanded it, do you get more growth allocation?
So if you changed the, the, an LDA area to RCA?
Or if the town expanded its boundaries along the coast here?
Yes.
You would gain some growth allocation.
But you'd have to record all the Eastmans, because, like, the FIDS is in the growth allocation that was calculated as acreage, correct? And the growth under the RPC?
Well, the FIDS habitat, the 200 acres.
Right.
Uh, was RCA and remained RCA, it wasn't, um, it wasn't carved out, the growth allocation didn't apply to it, it just applied to the land that's developed now.
Okay.
I think 32 acres or so, uh, was, um, used, 32 acres of growth allocation, no, there was, there were 32 acres of RCA that, that was carved out and made IDA.
Right. So the FIDS calculates what, though? Because the whole RPC came in from an annexation.
The FIDS was a, a, a condition by the Critical Area Commission and the town to authorize the growth allocation.
Was or is?
It was a condition of the growth allocation, so.
But it can't be remoted?
Which is, no, wh- which is interesting, growth allocation gives a great deal of discretion to a municipality, because it's like you have something, you have the capacity for development, and you're not going to give it away free, so most jurisdictions use this as a bargaining chip, and require something of importance to take place, and usually try to relate it to the environment, a, a town on the eastern shore, the town of Centerville, required as a condition of giving growth allocation that this, um, whole environmental buffer of about 100 and 200 feet from the edge of the water be dedicated to the town as a municipal park, and that the developer build a trail through it, provide, provide it to the town, yeah. So they have a great, and the developer's willing to do it, they're not going to use the land that much anyway, and the town completed its vision for a greenscape, a greenway program, uh, so that's kind of why municipalities are possessive of the growth allocation, they only let it go if they can get something in return. Now, having said that, just for the record, we can't just sort of wheel and deal, municipalities are not allowed to do that, you'd have to look at the comprehensive plan, does the comp plan envision that growth allocation would be used in this area? And does it recommend that a park be established there, and, and so you have to sort of wheel and deal based on some type of principles.
Well, that's kind of how it got made, because we had that whole pathways and vistas plan that was in the, in the old comprehensive plans, and we had the covenant.
Yep.
Um, and they brought in the RPC, and they made, they took the growth allocation and made those apartments and the townhouses that are about to be built, and that's how we got it, right?
Yeah, essentially, yeah, there was, um, a plan that imagined a lot of preservation, land preservation for this whole area, and we used that, where the town used that leverage it had to help implement its long-term plan.
Thank you for answering those questions, Chris.
You're welcome. I like to answer those questions. Chair, chairwoman, do, do you want me to just, can I just mention one other thing, um, and then I'll stand down on this critical area stuff? You know, go to page 35, please. Not much to see here, except that item G there says, "public beaches and other public water-oriented recreation and educational areas or activities," I said, including public peers, because I wanted to make it clear that within the town, we consider public recreational uses and education areas to be one in the same with public peers, because in our comprehensive plan, we have a vision that one day the town would do a public peer out into water for recreational purposes, and I wanted you to be able to do that. In other parts of this code, under the bottom regulations, we also say that a public peer in the buffer is allowable use. So my aim was to make sure that that option was, was not foreclosed by the Critical Area Commission, and that's, and I just wanted to call that out to your attention, so as you read this document more, you, you might catch reference to that public peer, uh, issue. And that's all I wanted to say about that, and we can return to this, and I'll continue to develop this further and do the COMAR research, and add the definitions back into this version, the document.
Can I ask a question quickly here? Um, there is a, there's a reference, and it's been a reference for the last, you know, 10 years on these different versions we've had, that they are using $1.50 as the, is there any way we can increase that with inflation, or is that set in some stone somewhere, it seems like we should be higher than $1.50 for?
Per, per square foot.
Per square foot, per square foot.
It adds up.
I'm sure it does, but that, that was being used back in 2010, it was the original version.
Yeah.
Seems like we should be upping that.
Right, uh, so, we, and the critical area allows us to do, the model ordinance has a footnote somewhere that says, if a municipality justifies the increase, it may propose something higher.
Yeah.
We just have to have some kind of rationale, like, um, in order to meet the planting requirements for 100 square feet of space, the actual cost for the trees would be equivalent to 200, or $2 per square foot, not 150.
It's on page 24, on the bottom of page 24G2, fee in lieu shall be assessed at $1.50 per square foot of required buffer mitigation.
Yeah. So, um, let's put together a, a quick little justification statement, or at least evaluate it and see what you get for 150, and, um, and then we could change that number to a higher, you have to have some kind of rationale, or else they won't budge from that, because that is a state law, but they do allow you to modify it if they're, if they, if they find that you've justified it.
Well, inflation?
Well.
No, I'm perfectly sure.
Yeah, of course.
So that would be easy.
I'm, I'm sure that was a ratio at the time, 10 years ago, $1.50 for a square foot, if we look at what that ratio was, you know, to the current, uh.
They haven't changed that since 2010.
I guess, 2010, I mean, that 150, I'm sure wasn't an arbitrary number, I'm sure it was based on some ratio of square footage, and then just apply that same ratio today, then that would, I would think, give us a more comparable, you know, allow for inflation in the past 13 years.
So we'll, we'll do that, send a, put some numbers together.
Okay.
To justify it.
I just think it's important that it just doesn't seem, you know, arbitrary and capricious, we just picked, you know, $5 out of the air.
Right.
Can you give an example of where this buffer mitigation fee would be imposed?
Yeah, is, is this a fee in lieu of, that we're referring to?
Fee in lieu, shall be assessed at $1.50 per square foot of required buffer mitigation.
So it, um, if, uh, uh, picture a location now on the buffer, uh, at the end of D Street, which is up south of First Street, if they, um, someone was going to take down one of their houses close to the, closest to the marsh, it's a tidal marsh, so it's buffer, and build a bigger house and cover more land, they'd be required to mitigate for that impact, and because those lots are kind of small, they wouldn't be able to plant there, so they'd pay a fee in lieu of, and would be based on the square footage of the added lot coverage, it actually would be, I think, two times the square feet, because it's within the buffer, um, so the numbers jump up pretty quickly, but that's an example. We've also had a situation where people cleared trees within the buffer, and there are fines that are assessed, and some of the fines have numbers like that, too, so, uh, they, they pay a fine to the town based on the square footage of clearing they've done. It, it doesn't apply in the MBA or the modified buffer area, this is the buffer, the buffer area.
Seems as though, the, the one concern I've had is that we are not, I want to say aggressive enough, but it seems like, we can go through all of this and, and fine tune it, but if we don't have the, the right amount of enforcement or punishment, I don't know if that's even the right word, we've got to be stringent on, you know, on what kind of assessments and whatnot that we have, I think, so, got to keep up to date on that.
Right.
I mean.
Otherwise, the sanction is just.
Otherwise, well, this is for not, you know, people will just do what they're going to do, right?
Seek permission, not, seek forgiveness, not permission, it's, um, it's 9:25, and at this point, uh, obviously, we still have some, uh, tree ordinance, a letter, some other business at hand. I, I think we should, I don't know how long everybody wants to go till 10 o'clock, you want to just move to the tree ordinance, the next, uh, agenda item, or do, do we want to set a time, or that we will go to and then just stop at that time? Or do we want to finish these other items, um, and then stop?
What was your intent with the tree ordinance?
I thought last month that we had discussed what we were gonna, we were going to talk further about that.
Well, the, the problem with the tree ordinance is that it passed the town council.
The urban forest passed, is that, is that the, the equivalent of the, what you had proposed in this one-page tree?
So, and this is something, the, the language I crafted for the critical area regulations is separate, different from the.
Yeah, the removal of individual trees that you had given us.
I wouldn't mind getting an understanding of where the tree ordinance applies and where it does not, because those trees that it protects are very large, and there's going to be a lot of trees that the ordinance does not protect at all.
We'll end to go to 10 o'clock. I think we should get these two things, the letter to the town tennis courts, I think that's important, I think the tree ordinance is important.
Well, I, I, then we can, we can go to 10 o'clock if nobody has a objection, um, in regards to the, the letter to the mayor and the town council reference to tennis courts, I mean, right now, uh, the town is in conversation with the Board of Education, and they're trying to determine an MOU that will make the agreement between the two, um, so I think the, the letter is not necessary at this juncture, because it hasn't been determined that if the MOU is struck, then the letter and the town intends to, to take over the tennis courts with the MOU and the maintenance and upkeep, we don't need the letter, so I think it has to be determined whether the MOU is going to actually be affected.
Can I make a comment on that? Um, since that is in process, um, I did draft a letter to mayor and town council, basically reasserting the importance of the tennis courts. You know, part of our duties and responsibilities.
You know, part of our duties and responsibilities, according to the code, is, is to comment on community facilities. And, you know, I don't know if that's, it, it shouldn't be. We, we should not have to write a letter to tell elected leaders to preserve those tennis courts. It's so obvious to so many people that they should be preserved. But...
We've talked about fail safes.
Well, yeah, I, I, I mean, here, here's my letter.
I don't, I don't think it's been determined that the, the town has in, the town is not cognizant of the, the resource that the tennis courts are. They are currently in conversation with the Board of Education, and I, you know, I, no, it's the Board of Education. They're in meetings, so they, they're trying to draft the MOU to preserve the resource and, and take it over. So I think that it's, it's moot at this juncture for us to present a letter. I think that it hasn't been determined that the town council and the mayor don't realize the value of the resource at this point.
I think my concern is, is that the discussions of funding, and there are some people who, who want to fund certain things and not other things, and I think that a planning commission recommendation to emphasize the need to fund and maintain tennis courts, and, and if, if negotiations are successful, that's fantastic. That would be, you know, something, something that the council and administration did very well, if they were to negotiate successfully, and we don't have to pay. And, and really, there's a good argument for Calvert County, or, not really a, there, there's a good arguments for different people to contribute money to the preservation of those tennis courts. But regardless of how that has all worked out, I think it's important for the planning commission to emphasize that they need to be retained and prioritized, and the effort either towards funding or negotiating, or whatever it is that ensures their preservation would be made. And I, I would like us to make a recommendation. It shouldn't be required. I think that most citizens would be appalled that we had the opportunity to retain tennis courts and didn't. So, to me, it's a no-brainer for elected officials, but, like Jan said, I don't want the planning commission to leave a stone unturned. And I don't, I, I would like any council member that needed the backing of the planning commission's recommendation to vote for something, I would like for those council people to have it.
Well, I will, if you want to make a motion to submit this, and then we can have a discussion, and we can vote on it, to submit it to the mayor and town council, we can do that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to submit a letter drafted to the town council, following this meeting, and to Mayor Mahoney and the town council, following this meeting, to emphasize the importance of preserving the tennis courts.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Discussion?
Yeah, I think, I mean, a letter's fine, but I, I think we could delete the first three paragraphs. We could make it a much shorter letter. We're only trying to...
Short letter would be better.
Emphasize the importance of the tennis courts. I, I would cut out the, the part about, it's the town's response, it's their obligation, and it's a disservice to the town residents. That's, I think, condescending to the town council. They know what their obligations are. We don't need to tell them, and we just need to emphasize that we support it. And so, I would, I'd make it much shorter. The first three, three paragraphs I'd cut off, and I'd reword some of the other language in the letter. And I haven't had time to really deal with it, so I don't have a proposal for rewording.
Mr. Hall?
I haven't read the whole letter, but I agree that we should support, if we can, sending a letter, so they have our opinion that we would appreciate town council backing some kind of MOU or some kind of agreement, so the facilities are available to the residents of Chesapeake Beach.
Okay. Mr. Weaver?
I just have a question, which is, what is an MOU?
A memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
My apologies. It's a formal agreement between the two entities that each will agree to whatever is determined.
Okay.
Vice Chair Green goes?
I agree that shorter is better. People tend to only read a few paragraphs, so I, you know, if you could, Lori agreed to maybe cut out the first, I think the first three paragraphs is good, and at this, you could just say, the plant, you could start out just saying, "The Planning and Zoning Commission would like to formally emphasize the importance," and you could just start out like that, and just make it short and sweet, and just, "We would appreciate any opportunity that, you know, might come up to supporting these tennis courts, blah, blah." But I think shorter and sweeter is better. So would, you know, would you like to perhaps amend your motion to include just those last three?
So, I think that, the...
Just start out by saying, "The Planning and Zoning..."
Suggestions for striking wording in the letter is paragraph one, paragraph two, Leave paragraph four, strike paradash five, and leave paragraph six.
Right. The only thing, paragraph four would not start at this time. It would start with, "The Planning and Zoning Commission would like to formally emphasize, not reemphasize."
Yeah. And, yeah, you don't have to start out with, "At this time," you just start out with, "The Planning Commission." So just start out with, "The Planning Commission," I mean, "Zoning Commission."
But the last paragraph's still...
Yeah, we don't, yeah, make it positive and take out anything that's, yeah, take out anything that's negative.
Yeah, for the more than any action or inaction.
So take out, if not, pick out from there on, I think you don't need any of that.
How about, "Regardless of property, is in the best interest of Chesapeake Beach residents, period." Cross out the following sentence.
Okay. That's fine.
What you were suggesting, Jan?
Yeah, yeah.
You all are correct. If we can just send and transmit them something, if there is the ability to act, I mean, we're at the 11th hour, so hopefully, you know, hopefully, you know, it is in the works, and...
Do you want to retype it, and we can agree, if you want to retype it and email it all to us, or what do you want to, how do you want to do this?
I think it's important that we transmit it.
Well, you've got to rewrite.
Before our next meeting, because obviously, our next meeting...
Okay.
We're not the same...
Very late.
Between now and...
So, the amended version...
Oh, yeah.
You will send to the chair, and she can transmit it, whatever, through the chair. You have to go through the chair.
Can, can I suggest that the chairman, I think, has a sense of what we generally agree to in this? And the chairman provides a report to the town council for their council meetings, that she could just include this language in her report.
As an attachment?
As, as part of her, her monthly report to the town council.
The, the only issue I have is that they're not meeting in August.
Yeah, that's true.
And I don't know how time-sensitive this is, and that's why I, I would be interested in transmitting...
If they're dark, though, they're going to not read anything anyway this month, probably.
I don't think they're dark. There's a whole coastal resiliency meeting.
Yeah, but how are they going to vote on this? Or, I mean, see it if they're not convening?
We shouldn't be losing the tennis courts.
I, I don't think anybody's disputing that. I think if they're not meeting next month, then, in, in regards to my report and this attachment...
When will she need a report for the town council? Not until September?
Yeah, it won't be till September, but if you submit it to the town administrator, it will get sent to the council. I mean, once Lori revises her letter, sends it to you, and if you want to CC the commission so that they can see it, email it to Holly, and then the council will see it. Is this in violation of the open meeting, that we are conducting business and we're actually not, or we just agreed to?
We're in an open meeting.
Well, I mean, we have to agree to it now. We're doing a motion here to, for her to revise, and everybody's going to either agree or not, or agree to transmit it.
Okay.
So, all right, I don't see any issue, but that's entirely to you. So then, we'll amend the letter, and then I'll submit it to the town administrator. I'm also going to modify it so it says, "The Town of Chesapeake Beach Planning and Zoning Commission," instead of just the Chesapeake Beach Planning. Right, his official title.
Yeah, and town administrator.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Did we need to, we have a second on that? We need to complete the motion. You didn't make a motion, right?
So, the motion is to transmit it...
amended, amended.
The amended letter to the mayor, the town council, and the town administrator, as amended on July 27, 2023.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do we want to now address the removal of the individual trees in the critical area?
Remove of individual, you don't want to do that?
It seems no.
But I'm intending to insert it in this, in the draft ordinance, under the IDA section, so that's where you'll see it, in the, the draft, that you'll see in August, assuming you're meeting in August.
The, the one comment I had, I saw this in St. Michael's tree in the critical area, they included a reason why the canopy trees were important to not just the ground, but also the streams, to retain the temperature of the streams. And I thought that was a very important point. It's not just to protect the overall coverage of the ground, but also the temperature of the water, the waterways. And I think we need to add that in there under purpose.
Fair enough.
Can I make a comment, please?
Please do.
Determined by a property owner's supposed immediate press or human safety work, damage to real property due to effect of falling might, may be removed prior to notifying the town. Yes, feels like... You know, it's, it sort of gives people permission to say, you know, that might fall.
Look shaky. Take it down.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I just think that's much too open, and I just thought I'd say that. It'll work out.
I agree with that.
Property owner wants what he wants. I have a property... I get it, I get it, but I, I don't want it.
My, following what Jan is saying, do...
I think you're right about that.
Is, do people need a permit to take down trees that are less than 50 inches, or less than 75 inches diameter, in certain places? Because I'm reading the Annapolis Tree Ordinance, and you need a permit for a tree greater than five inches in diameter. And I think the town, the town of St. Michael says you need a permit for any tree. And so, our town is only requiring a permit for huge trees, and they're so, I just drive around, and I see all the trees that require nothing whatsoever.
So, this, this addresses trees within the critical area in the IDA, because those trees are generally not protected by the strict standards of the LDA and RCA trees. And any tree would require a permit, and that's how we handle it now. But we don't say no to removing trees in the IDA. Anybody who files an application to remove a tree is granted the right to remove the tree, provided they shore up the land and replace it with another tree. So, this doesn't change that, really. It just provides some boundaries around that, that policy.
So, I know that, so let's talk about Cox Road. There's a large amount of standing, I mean, I would call those a standing forest of some sort, and you say that that used to be not IDA, so maybe it has some other, I mean, are there any easements on there? Are there any, I mean, can Cox Road be completely clear-cut, under what's being proposed?
I, if it's in an LDA zone, yeah. Assuming the trees, yeah.
It's, so it's an LDA and IDA.
Not an LDA, you can't do...
Not in the LDA. If it's in the, the IDA portion of Cox Road can be clear-cut. And, I mean, the tree ordinance isn't going to protect anything on that property, because there's nothing that big.
Well, clear-cutting of trees, removal of trees in the critical area, clear-cutting is allowed if it's tied to a development plan. Like, if they're exercising their rights to improve their property and development according to a permit, they can clear the space that's necessary. Or if they have one or two trees, like this house already, and the property, and the trees are overgrown, they want to remove those trees, these onesie-twosies types of things. Those are approved and are allowed. There's no restriction on those.
In the IDA. Right. I'm just wondering what, what, I'm just wondering what the tree ordinance does when the trees that it protects are so big. What is it accomplishing? Because I don't really see any trees, except for maybe, I don't know, I could probably count them on two hands, 10 trees that we might save with that ordinance.
Yeah, I've not been involved in that ordinance or deliberations. I've reviewed it for them, but only for, see how it matches up with the Critical Area Regulations and, but that's in their judgment, that's what they came up with.
That was the leadership decision, for sure.
Do we, do we have a definition of what a tree is?
Uh, yeah.
So, so we're talking about something with, I mean, in, in the code, in the definitions, Chesapeake Beach Code, it says, "A tree is a large branch-wooded plant having one or several self-supporting stems or trunks that reach a height of at least 20 feet at maturity," which happens to be the same definition that the Maryland Code Natural Resources uses. But then, in our code, it says, "A for, in a forest," there's sections under that, says, "includes areas that have at least 100 live trees per acre with..." says includes areas that have at least 100 live trees per acre with at least 50% of those trees having a two-inch or greater diameter at four and a half feet above ground, which is similar to what was passed. I mean, the diameter's a lot bigger, but four and a half feet above ground is the measuring point. I mean, don't we have to define what a tree is before we start talking about whether you can take it down or, or, you know, what the rules are?
And Michael does a good job by defining the diameter of that thing. So if it's a, the first part of that definition, or the first definition you read, that talks about a woody plant that grows tall. But you could say,
That's not much help.
But if you said,
Come on, get eloquent.
And any one that's, any one of those things that is greater than five inches diameter, measured at breast height, or two inches in diameter, whatever the case may be. In other words, it defines it based, so if someone wants to clear some woody vegetation, they're not cutting trees down if they're just pulling up a a stray maple tree.
Oh, yeah, I, it's, it's going to be confusing to the public that we have this new ordinance on urban forests, I think is the title of it, that defines trees, and then we're going to have a different definition of a tree someplace else. Somebody paint a red, a yellow line so that the public knows where the diff, I mean, it's, it's just a confusing situation. I don't think it's helpful.
Yeah, we should absolutely, I think, have a consistent definition of the, the tree. But also, I think, this is very interesting to me that, you know, the green team is busy following the Maryland ordinance of planting 5 million trees in five years, and they're working to identify sites in Chesapeake Beach, and it's pretty loose as far as, I mean, we've just heard St. Michael's, Annapolis, there's either no diameter, it's any tree. And perhaps this is where we're dated in this. I mean, to be able to just cut down trees because, hey, I'm going to build, you know, I want this view, I want this perspective on my property now. You know, you know, trees help climatization, you know? If there's less trees on the property, I mean, things are, they're a lot more exposed to the sun and to the heat, and they're baking. And, and maybe this is where, as I said, this ordinance reflects, yeah, maybe 20 years ago, you just take down trees as you want, your property, do, do what you like. But I, I don't know necessarily if that's, you know, the sound thing to do in 2023.
Is it possible that, maybe, since we're running out of time, maybe Chris can come up with a definition and include it in here under purpose? We need to have the definition in there somewhere, or make it another letter or something.
Or be definition.
Instead of
Considering removing the forest conservation article from the code, correct?
No.
You think that's possible to come back with a definition that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Why don't, why don't you do that? And that we include that in here?
Would you like me to write standards for deciding whether the town should permit a tree to be removed in the IDA or not, notwithstanding what the other tree ordinance says?
Yes, yes.
So you, you could imagine a situation where the zoning administrator would say, no, you can't take down a tree on your private property.
Yeah, and
What would the condition be?
Well, I think
When would you say no to something?
When, you know, when Jan brought up the idea of number, you know, the, these number two and three, you're basically just letting them take down anything they want because it's so vague. I mean, every tree is a threat if you don't like it. I mean, it's, you know, it's in my way, so it's a threat to my, you know, my psyche.
Some people don't like trees if they're close to the house. Some people
Or it's allergic to it, or whatever, you know.
If it's, if it's close to the neighbor's pool and the neighbor's complaining.
So we have to be careful about how we just open that up on number two and three there.
There, what condition would you want the town to say no?
No trees ever taken out, ever.
Offers between properties.
If it doesn't seem for a safety reason.
Shade for public walkways and spaces.
Those would be reasons to
They know you can't take down those trees.
Providing shade?
Shade of public, public walkways and, and spaces. I think, I think the, the terms in the tree ordinance for, you know, those trees are the definitely, yes, you are going to preserve those huge trees. But I think in the IDA, clear cutting Cox Road would be, there's, there's a lot of buffer trees there. There's maybe a definition of a forest there that could be preserved in some areas.
I think we can handle that, but for just the mom and pop tree, like the trees is, is overgrown on somebody's property?
If, if, I think it's going to cause root damage. I think there, there is a reason to take it down. It's going to cause root damage of the structure of the house or pipes. I think there is, there has to be documented. You have to have documented reasons. It's going to be, well, it's going to be damaging to the property. I think there is a, a real reason. If it's going to damage the pipes of the house or the structure of the house, it has to be taken down. Or if it's diseased, and it's been documented as being diseased. It's got to be documented by a tree specialist. And, you know, but otherwise, they shouldn't be taking down at all. But if it's going to be, in true, you know, there's going to be intrusion in the pipes or the structure, yes. I think they should be allowed to take that tree down.
If there's a tree, so I just want to make this clear. If there's a tree on the rear of your lot that's far removed from your house, it's a big lot, there would be a prohibition on someone from removing that tree. They move into the neighborhood or into the house on their property and there's a tree like that, doesn't pose any threat.
It's over a certain size. I think if you have over a certain size, you shouldn't be able to take it down. You know?
It is a tough question.
What if you planted the tree and you just want to take it down now?
So previously, we had a situation in Richfield Station. And the way the developer developed the land around the townhouses, all of the drainage from the roofs of the townhouses were going into one area. And there was trees in that one area. And, and when they planted, it was no big deal. But as they got bigger, it kept the sun away from it. So all of a sudden, we have drainage issues. We have erosion issues. We have all kinds of issues. And we had the town engineer come out, and he basically said, the sunlight's not coming in because of the growth of the trees. And so they recommended to put the swale in to remove some of the trees to also allow the swale to go in and to let the sunlight come in. So, you know, when you plant the trees, like you said, you don't realize the circumference of what it's going to do and the effects as it grows. So if we did not take some of those trees down, that a person planted on their property that agreed to it, if we didn't remove them, we would have bigger issues because we would still have the drainage. It was affecting all the yards. There was just nothing we could do about it unless we allowed more sunlight to come in and we, we put a swale in. So I, you know, it's not like, there's always reasons, right? But are they good reasons? Is it, is it feasible? Not, I just want to cut it down because I'm tired of the tree and I don't want to turn around the tree. But, you know, something to think about.
If it's a magnolia and you just don't want the leaf litter in your yard.
I have one of those.
I mean, I have a tour of poplar, and it, it's constantly shedding leaves. And my neighbor next door, he has a pool. If he could take down that tree, trust me, he'd be out there with a chainsaw. He hates it because he's constantly draining his pool. But the tree's so big, if the tree comes down, the whole hillside's coming down, so. But I, I do think, I mean, that's why I think it has to be a, a safety reason. It has to be, you know, people, I think their tendency is, you know, for whatever reason, they don't want a tree that's already on the property. They just bought the house. They don't like trees near the house because of lightning. It depends, you know, what their experience is, how they grew up. If they never had trees near their property or any trees on the property, they move here and then they're like, no, I'm taking that down. And I just think,
He wants criteria.
This is not safe.
If it was a criteria that was maybe smaller than the 50 inches, which is pretty big, or like the, the 75 inches, which is really big, it was a smaller criteria. And then I think they did set up like a tree board of some sort that would make
That could listen to the explanation of why they want.
Yeah, and, and provide relief, but I think the
But I thought there was an application to take down, but that's based on diameter of the tree that you needed application.
Commit an application to the town, and we document it. Though we know that there is a tree that's being removed, and we require that it be replaced. And often it's replaced with a tree that is equivalent, that will grow up to be as big in the future. Or sometimes if it's, they have limited space, we say, here is a selection of what we call understory trees, like, like flowering dogwoods or hollies or something, they're going to grow under 20 feet, more suitable for residential location. So it allows for us to ensure that trees continue to be replanted, but for property owners to customize their, the land so that they can live in harmony with the trees above them. A lot of people can't stand the trees and the threat that they, they pose. And I love trees. I mean, I, I want as many as possible, but I, I have to interact with residents and have for a long time on this issue. And, and generally, for a while, I was asking, do you think we should even require this type of standard? Because this is not really in law. It's just a custom that the town requires permits in the IDA. And most people say, yeah, I think you should. I think, I wouldn't be able to take the tree down, but I think you should track it. I think you should require me and everybody else to replant. Because I don't want the town to not have any trees. And I say, well, that's interesting. So, so they give me some trouble, but then they, they're like, I understand the rationale. So the way that we've done it is to create a, kind of a good faith effort. You apply to the town to get your tree removed, if it's in your interest to do it, but as a condition for that, you have to replant, and we'll send someone out to verify that you've done it.
I think when you buy something in the critical area, everybody, if somebody goes out, takes pictures of your yard, and knows what trees are there, we have to have some documentation of people who buy in the critical area, and we know what their, you know, what their trees are that they have in their yards.
So, but you're saying then you wouldn't allow for those trees to be removed?
No, nope. Not unless they've got, they're intruding, they're intruding in their pipes, or they're, they're, they're unhealthy.
Okay, damage potential hazard or disease or something.
Yes.
What happens if you buy it and you find out you're allergic to the tree?
They should know that. They should know that before they're going into the property. Of some When you go into a critical area, you should know what's in that, that, and you should know the rules about taking out trees before you buy that property. Your real estate agent should be.
It should be required that any, you know, eventually the town knows who bought what, and I think it should be required that anybody that buys into areas where this is an issue, that they get a, you know, return
I, I have property.
Here are the rules and regulations.
I have property in California where I have to sign off that I know that I can't take this and that. I mean, that's exactly what I do in California, with property.
This belongs.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, well, it's actually an HOA law, but it's part of the city too. So it's actually part of the city as well. But yeah.
And California doesn't come here.
Strictive in their tree, tree.
The green team put together a very detailed ordinance. It was, and the town council adopted it on urban forests. It's got a whole process here. I mean, we're talking about all the things that should happen, could happen, ought to happen. But there's got to be some enforcement mechanism. There's got to be some process. And they've set it all up in this document. So if you haven't read it, you might want to look at it. But I would suggest if, if we want to do something more in the critical area, that's what we're talking about.
Critical.
That we amend this to put it all under the, I didn't make this up, tree board. But nonetheless, there, there, there are things in here, but to put it in one place, and then you can have, in the critical area, there are different rules, maybe two inch, five inch.
It's a great idea.
Leave my trees alone. They're right near the foundation of my house. They're weeds. And I, I love trees, but I'm not going to cut them down until they give me a problem. I have 11 trees on my property in Holland Point. One of them is six, 16 feet circumference, okay? But anyway, so.
Wow.
Wow is right.
I like trees, okay? But I, I think a more useful way to approach this issue is to look through this document and then append something to it that talks about that critical area. Okay?
That's a very good idea.
What it says, though, I haven't read it.
You have.
Amazing. We are at five after 10. Do I have a, a motion to?
Yes. Before we adjourn, did we actually make a meeting for August then, or what are we doing?
Well, we have to make sure that, that, okay.
You have to know the town's order.
Oh, we'll check with that.
Potential is there.
August 23rd.
Be careful.
I'm sorry?
August 23rd.
Yes, yes, 7:00 PM. Due to the hour, do we want to forego the comments by commissioners?
Oh, comments by commissioners.
Want to forego that?
I have a comment.
Okay, then let's
He has a comment.
Let's, we will make a motion to adjourn. I, I understand that. And then we will do the, if that's seconded, then we'll do comments by commissioners, and then we will adjourn. Commissioner Brown?
We have a motion.
It was seconded, yes?
You mean to adjourn?
Yeah, well, I guess we will. Minutes.
At the town council meeting, they passed the two ordinances that we proposed, changes to the code. One of them amends section 290 dash, what is it? 290 dash 23. It adds section 290 dash 23, the standards for compatibility in section five. But there's already a 290 dash 23, which is general requirements in section six. So are we going to re, renumber all of the code following that? Because we've added that one section? It's a major change to the whole, whole code outline. Anyway, I just thought I'd point that thing out. And also, if, if you didn't notice, on page 25 of our critical area document, it refers to an insertion from section 290 dash 17G, which gets inserted into this. So that's seven more pages in the critical area document. It's actually pages 40 to 48 in what Chris, the existing critical area code. So you might want to look at that before our next meeting. That's all I have.
Can you repeat that again? Say that again?
On page 25, if you look at the middle of the page, it says, insert here section 290 dash 17G.
Got it.
Okay, that's pages 40 to 48 of the other, the existing critical area section that Chris handed to us. What is it? 30 pages or something, 40 pages? So something we'll have to look at when we're looking at the critical area document next time.
Commissioner Hahn?
I just want to remind everybody, if you have radon meters, to check them. Recently, one of the neighbors in Richfield Station mentioned that she has a radon meter, and it normally, it's below four. It's usually around one or two. And recently she checked it and it's reading a level of 24, which is very high. There was some work done in the neighborhood. There was some work done in the neighborhood on the roads. This was in Silver Fox area. And there was work done on the road. So now a bunch of the neighbors are checking in this area, but I know that there's being work done throughout the the town. So I just want to give a heads up that they want to check it and get a meter if you don't have one.
Yeah, yeah.
Not good news. That's good news. Just coupled with PFAS. See? That's not good.
Talk about PFAS.
I just wanted to thank the town council for passing those text amendments last, last meeting. The, I know that we had a comment from Wes Donovan regarding the parking. And it's, it's a concern of ours, I think at least mine, I know, that the parking is an important part of, of what we, we provide, especially the middle subdivision down there by, by BIAS and that area down there. They, they are so lacking in, in the parking that I think that it was the right thing to do for the town, for the people in that area. And I'm just grateful that the town council saw their way to to pass that. It's very important. And I know that a lot of residents are very grateful that, that that was passed. So that's all I want to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's nothing.
Commissioner Blackwell?
I also want to thank the town council for passing the two ordinances. And I think the parking is appropriate. Just as an example, Calvert County requires three parking spaces for a townhouse or apartment. So there's, there's nothing unreasonable about the parking. I appreciate that they did pass that. That is, that is a real step towards making it more comfortable for people who live in newly developed property in Chesapeake Beach. Also, I'd like to say that I really appreciate the work that Chris has done recently. And now that recently been doing such great work that I'm loving, now you're leaving. So that, that is my luck. And that's, that's all I have to say. And I appreciate the commission supporting the tennis court there. That's it for me.
My final comment is, again, congratulations, Chris. Sorry, we drag, we dragged you back in next month, but at least it's the twenty third and, and not the thirty first. And the only thing I want to say is, yes, absolutely. Thank you to the, the mayor and the town council. And the mayor, you know, spoke about leadership and the importance of it in moving ahead, not tabling the ordinance that, that was recommended. And I appreciate the courage and the leadership to pass that because he broke the tie. And the compatibility standards, I know we certainly put a lot of effort and time into them. And we certainly, I, I, perhaps I don't mean to be premature, but I don't think we really wanted to revisit them. So anyway, and my only other comment is, I'd like to, in the future, to have our meetings at, at six. And so I want to work with the town administration about making sure if that, if that is actually feeable, feasible, if there's no ordinance that doesn't preclude us from meeting at six versus seven, I think. Yes, I I totally understand that. I figure it's, you know, one time a month, but if it's, if it's a true hardship, then no. But it certainly, you know, would help the staff here. Because as you can see, it's ten fifteen and one of them has a very long drive. So anyway. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? Meeting adjourned.
So for me, six o'clock.
That was a long one.
Thank you for saying that.
If we hadn't had the party for Chris.
I never got lunch.
I was so psyched.
The same time.
When I thought we were meeting for six, I was so psyched. Yes, I get to watch the Women's World Cup.